Hey, Mom. I got it working. I got it working.
You can't work it?
Yeah. Yep, there it is. We're live. We're good to go.
Need a little round of applause for you out here.
What's your son?
Ryan.
He's gonna stay?
Yeah.
Ryan saved the day.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 5, 2023 Bruce Township Planning and Session, or Commission meeting. Our meeting start time...
Seven thirty-four.
Seven thirty-four PM. Dana, will you please call the roll?
Vincent.
Here.
Cupid.
Here.
Hegelstein.
Here.
Camp.
Here.
Chapman. Derek Burnett.
Here.
Conroy.
Yes.
Here.
So we have a quorum. Dana, good to see you back. I'm sorry, Mandy.
What'd you have for burgers?
Nothing. Good to have you back. All the guys for game was good notice the last meeting. Okay. So we have a quorum. Ready to get started. Before we do, we're gonna ask you everyone to rise. We'll do the pledge and leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a few words, maybe more than a few, about the way we conduct business. This is a public business meeting of the Planning Commission, but we do welcome public comments, and we do have some materials that people have sent into us through the mail. We request that you sign in if you haven't. If you're able to, sign in so we know who was here, how many people were here, et cetera. And that gives us a record of attendees, and if there's a reason we need to contact you afterwards, we have the number. I understand the crowd is large, may not have done it, but hopefully a number of you have. This commission is made up of seven Bruce Township citizens, appointed by the board, and in addition to that, we have a township employee, Dana Buchanan, who helps us getting ready for the meeting, during the meeting, getting her son to help us with the meeting and the whole bit. So Dana, thank you very, very much. She also is a former Planning Commissioner herself, and she will participate in some of the discussion that pertains to things that she has additional information on or new information that she received in the office. We also have Joe Tangeri to my right. Joe is a professional planner. He's with Giffords Webster, and he acts as an advisor to us as we do our work, helps a lot getting us prepared for the meeting. There's gonna be opportunities on our agenda for public questions and comments. Generally, we ask you keep the comments to three minutes. But in a situation where one speaker will represent multiple people, which I hope is going to happen, we increase that time to five minutes. So as you approach the microphone, we ask for your name, your address, and that'll be recorded and entered in the minutes. If there is a spokesman or spokesperson for the group, as that comes up, please identify, each issue comes up, I'm sorry, please identify yourself as the spokesman for our group. We all want to get home sometime tonight, but we also want to hear what you have to say. So be mindful of the time limit, respect each other during the meeting, and things will go well. Your comments should come to the commissioners, not to other people in the audience, people that you want to get your point across to as this group. In some cases, we're the final decision; in other cases, we're recommending a group to the Township Board. When you move to the podium, I mentioned, state your name and address for the record. Make sure your comments to us. And on behalf of all the commissioners, we appreciate you being with us today. Okay. So item four, well, let me just ask, is there any changes to the agenda that anyone would like? All right. We'll do the approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Any changes?
Yeah. On page two. Motion by Hegelstein, it starts, one, two, three, four, five lines down, it more or less says, "The wetlands, which require the placement of the principal structure and accessory buildings to be so far..." Rear word. That's, it needs to be readdressed. "Accessory building to be so far set back from the front property line." Sounds better.
Any additional changes?
Yes.
Yeah. And then there's, on page three, the very bottom, Tremblay informed the Planning Commission it should be "about" the two ordinance changes that were recommended and made. The word "about" should be in there.
Well, I had a question on that one, too. Is that the change, or is there...
He just informed us what the changes were. He just told us about it as it went to the board.
But there was no decision.
But just this sentence didn't say... Make it clear. That he told us about the two ordinance changes.
Yeah, on that same line, Dana. On the third line, where's this "and to"? Instead of get rid of, say, remove the requirement. And then at the end of that sentence, it should say, "And rely..." On the zoning dimensions instead, consistent with the state of Michigan.
It's just not clear to me what that sentence is even saying. Is it saying they were approved?
Yeah, calm that down.
Okay.
Next sentence, both of these were proposed by the board trustees.
Thank you, Jer.
Okay, page one. On page one. The Justin Razan comment. The second sentence there should be, "Planner was asked to bring comparisons and suggestions for potential wording changes." Okay, so make the motion to approve the minutes as modified in this meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Cupid, seconded by Chapman. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oath, nay. Motion carries. Now we move to the agenda. Item five, any changes to the agenda that the commission chooses to make?
Can I mention that the agenda was changed kind of late in the day? What you have is the official, but it was posted online. There were slight changes, it was slightly different. The Paolo thing was renamed to, and that's in parentheses there, you can see that. Joe thought that it'd be better, more aptly named.
Which one? What should it be named, Joe?
Oh, um...
That's 10A?
Yeah.
Dana, I'll hear my closer call.
Let's see, that was, um...
To include storage?
Oh, yeah, outdoor storage only uses. Where's it? Outdoor storage only uses.
See that in your agenda? Will we switch on? That might be something somebody else was talking about.
I don't know. Is that person here? For which one?
A.
No, that was for the, uh... I, 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 AAs, or something.
Yeah. Was that person here?
Yeah, but they're first.
Hold on.
Is your gentleman here?
No, he should be here in about 15 minutes.
All right. We should, yeah, we're gonna, I'm gonna suggest that we switch items seven A and seven B. This would be first, followed by the one labeled A, IAA. Hopefully he'll be here. So...
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Let's see, number six. Number six is labeled "public comment," but that would be for anything not on this agenda. People from time to time come in to ask questions or make comments about things that matter to them. If you're here to talk about any of the items under public hearings or other agenda items, save that till when we get to that spot in the agenda. So is there anyone that has something to say, not relative to anything on item seven and beyond? Seeing no one, we'll move on. Finishing item number six. Okay. Sir Koff, we moved you up a little higher than your agenda. You approach the microphone and let us know what you need us to hear.
Good evening. Tom Sir Koff, 156 West Gates, Bruce Township, 48032 units. We went down 24 at one time, adjacent to my property, also called Deer Park. A few months ago, I submitted a, "I'm doing the best that I can to satisfy and make it palatable to the township, the residents, and myself suited at this time, and I can take any questions if anyone has any."
Tom, I've got a question. On your previous list of conditions, you had on your beach unit was gonna have a basement, and I'm not sure if that was inadvertently omitted.
We did, and I actually, I added it. It was late, so I have copies that say basement on it, if you guys want one.
Longer than the...
Yep. Yep, and I can give her one right here. She can have one right now.
Is that the only change from the...
So I have one that was dated 5/27. Is there, are there any other changes from that one?
There shouldn't be. I'll give you the current copy that I have as well.
Joe, I noticed some differences from what he's given you to what you have in your review.
Yeah, so...
They're subtle.
I just wanted to make sure that we wind up with the correct set of conditions.
So I can point you out to ones that I've seen that are different.
Yeah, I'm looking at the most recent one here. You can continue the discussion while I'm looking at this side. I will make sure that I'm reading off this one to my letter.
Just ask if any other question, Mr. Sir Koff, or Joe, his thoughts, road and public hearing.
On number five, I think it says the Department of Roads instead of the Macomb County Road Commission. I think that was one that we changed.
So are you turning the house down or moving it?
It's not gonna be there. I'm not sure if we're gonna tear it down or, you know, repurpose. We're gonna try and repurpose the materials as much as we can. But yeah, it'll no longer, it'll no longer be there.
Tom, the sketch that you submitted shows five quadplexes, and then last I heard in offline discussion is the front quadplex. That was gonna be two duplexes.
It's a possibility that we may separate a few of them. This is still a concept plan, you know, at site design and engineering. We'll work with the township to determine if that makes sense. Once we remove the home, there's, there's a lot more property and room, so once we get the site plan, we're thinking of maybe like a park-like setting in between where retention is and the last unit. Again, we haven't, you know, once you get the site plan and design, we might do some of those changes at that point. But it's gonna be 20 total units.
Do you have any extras of that? What you gave?
You gave me two.
Um, yeah.
Is this the same thing?
Yeah, I think you got the early version of that, so it's the same one. It is.
I think there's some subtle differences.
Tom, can you maybe speak to some of the concerns that have been brought up here in the past around, you know, either from the commission or from the community, whatever the project, and what changes have ever been made to, in result of some of those conversations?
Yes, for sure. Well, the de-watering has been brought up quite a few times. I know Deer Park had just put in a new well. We've talked to Dan from Suburban Drilling and a Dave from B&amp;B. They're indicating at a 50-foot well depth, there should be no need for, you know, it shouldn't affect a well 50 foot deep. After the elevation, you could limit, even limit it further by lowering the brick ledges or elevating the grade, which the grade's gonna be elevated for a certain point, you know, to begin with. Dan from Suburban Well Drilling, who installed Deer Park, said the static water pressure is somewhere around 22 feet below the surface. If we do, when we do the underground utilities, they're between eight and 12, plus the grade's gonna come up, so we, they're saying that we shouldn't be anywhere near, and there's a high possibility that de-watering won't need to be done at all. And that's from Doug from McDowell and Associates Professional Engineering Company. Jennifer Snyder from the Public Health Service Department, the manager there, says there's no state, there's no state review of the water supplies will be required for classification purposes if they each serve one unit or home. Our department would still need to review and approve the site condos with an individual well under their provisions, but there is no state review required if you do one well per one unit, similar to Twin Brooks Development up the street here from us. They have condos at one well per unit.
Joe, anything you can add before we go to the public hearing?
Well, so I had copied the conditions from earlier, but we're in the letter of conditions, so just be aware that the version that was passed around this evening is the final version. It's subtly different from the one that's in my letter. And it's, it's the one that will go with this rezoning, so I can read that into the record if you want me to. That would be at your request. Otherwise, I'll note that the final density that we're winding up at here is 3.2 units per acre, and the current zoning...
You need to put 3.82 units per acre.
And the current zoning is two units per acre, which are 12 units for the current zoning. So additional eight units with the rezoning request and the conditions attached to it. And yeah, I guess just for everybody's benefit, a rezoning changes the zoning of a property, and under Michigan law, an applicant can voluntarily offer conditions on a rezoning, and those conditions become part of the rezoning. It's essentially a contract between the landowner and the township and any subsequent owners that place certain restrictions on what can be done with that property under the new zoning. So that's what a conditional rezoning is. We've been kind of using the term, but that's what it is, just so that everyone understands what we're talking about. Anything else you'd like me to add or address?
Joe, the conditions that are being proposed by the applicant, do they need to be put into a contract, or are they...
Yes, ultimately, that would be formatted as a contract. It's signed by a representative of the township, most likely the supervisor, and a representative of the applicant.
Thank you.
So once this goes to the board, because this is something that does need to go to the board, all rezonings, a rezoning is strictly speaking a change to your zoning ordinance because your zoning map is part of your zoning ordinance, and those changes can only be given final approval by the Township Board. So once the Planning Commission has, is done tonight, what they're gonna do is they're gonna make a recommendation to the Township Board, and the board will take this up at their next meeting and make the final decision. So once that happens, then these conditions will be converted into a contract.
So I think we have enough information at this point to open the public hearing to see if there's others who'd like to speak on the subject, so...
I just have one question for Joe. How is the density change from the previous?
Rick, I just knew you would know, but...
I wanted my spreadsheet up.
Yeah.
I think, I think we were at 16 units.
16 single-family homes?
Well, so the last official submission was 18 units in five buildings, and that carved out a portion of the site for...
Because the house was in this house.
So what you wound up with is 19 units on the, the 5.32 acres, which, no, those... It was six, 3.63 units the last time we looked at this, and now it's 3.82.
Okay, we need a motion to open the public hearing if you're...
I'll make a motion. Open the, open the public hearing at 8:02.
Second.
We should open the public hearing at 8:02, seconded by Connie, and seconded by Rick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Okay, if you're here to talk about this particular topic, this is where you would approach the microphone, give your name and address, and then go ahead and offer your comments relative to what's being proposed this night.
Hey, Ian. Paul Lokonyevsky, 71970, last year, Road Bruce Township. My credentials are 20 years on the Planning Commission, 10 years on the board, I'm a certified planner. Welcome, Mandy, you're in my old seat. And I'm a spokesperson for a number of the residents here who've asked me to come speak tonight. Again, this board has never approved a two-level jump in zoning. I know and understand the master plan and the ordinances since I helped author many of them and most of it. This does not fit the character of our community. This board has vowed to keep the historical and rural aspect of our community. I can't tell you how many times we've had developers come in here saying, "This is what's going on in other communities, this is what they want, you need to have it and want it, too." No, we don't. We don't want it, we don't need to have it, we wanna maintain the historical and rural character, and it's obvious that the developer's not interested in doing that. If you go in the back of that property, which I hope all of you have walked it, it's probably saturated right now after that rain we had on Sunday. It's such a high water table, and there's a natural spring back there. It just percolates all the time, and I'm probably, you're probably ankle-deep in water right now. So I don't know, has the property ever been perked? Have you requested it to be perked to see even how many units it would yield? All right? So it's a two-level jump. It doesn't meet the standards of our ordinance and master plan. 16 units would be about two vehicles per unit. You're talking 32 vehicles at about two to four trips each, and that would be just hundreds of trips and cars going in and out of there at an intersection that's already, you know, very hazardous, let's say, and the pressure system in that intersection isn't always working as well as it should. Okay? It's not wanted by our community. It's not wanted by the people that are here represented tonight. The developer apparently hasn't gotten that message to try to work with the commission and the community, and every member of this board needs to make a recommendation of a no vote on this rezoning. If he has even shown that he's unable to develop at the current zoning, I don't think that's happened since the last time we were here, what, November, I think it was? No, it doesn't sound like that's happened either. So he hasn't perked, he hasn't shown that he cannot develop at the current level, so, and he's not trying to meet the standards of this township. You need to uphold our master plan, you need to uphold... You need to uphold our master plan, you need to uphold the rural and historical atmosphere of this community, and deny this zoning tonight.
Hi, my name is Don Stone, and I live at 170 West Gates, right adjacent to the property at 156. I was very proud of the decision that you guys made the last time, and all the very valid reasons you gave to deny the proposal to rezone that and put in 20 condos. I was elated, and I thought that was the end of it. And then, of course, he comes back with a stick and a carrot. And the stick is, I'm gonna build 16 homes in there. You guys don't want that? I'm gonna build 16 homes. And that scared the hell out of a lot of people, scared the hell out of me. And the carrot was to put the 20 condos. But it ain't a carrot, it's a turd. That's what it is. It's a turd. I'm asking you to go back to the original reasons you turned them down, and to do it all over again. Thank you very much.
My name is Anne Marie Boyce, 70170 Whitetail Lane, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Deer Park Condominium Association. That's 20 homes, and I think there's seven or eight of our neighbors here this evening, so I would appreciate a little extra time. Thank you. The Deer Park condo owners met on June 27th, and they requested that I give formal notice to the township on the public record with regard to four items related to the potential approval of the rezoning for 156 West Gates. Number one, the current request for 20 condo units spread across the entire 5.2 acres is positive in that it's equal to the existing number of units in Deer Park under its 1988 master deed. But it's still 13% denser than Deer Park based on the number of units spread across the entire development area. And that's because Deer Park is seven tenths of an acre larger. If the rezoning is approved, this will set the new standard for density along West Gates. So Deer Park is putting the township on notice that if we choose to connect to a future municipal water service through Bruce Township, that we reserve the right to add a sixth building of condominiums in the area that's currently occupied by our wells in the well-isolation zone. Number two, we understand, and we understand the reasoning, Mr. Sirakoff continues to refuse to put money in escrow to cover damages to or loss of our regulated public water system, for which the total replacement cost at this point in time is nearing $100,000 once everything is added in. Deer Park is therefore giving notice that if any activity undertaken in the development of 156 West Gates damages our well-water system in any regard, that Deer Park will move not only to hold Mr. Sirakoff, his developer, engineers, and contractors responsible, but also the township. The township's elected officials are also responsible for ensuring that all construction and engineering standards and local and county ordinances are met or exceeded, and this includes your own ordinances, 161, 186, and 187. If development at 156 West Gates causes damage or detriment to any, of any kind to Deer Park, including increased storm or surface water runoff, basement flooding due to increased groundwater, grade disruptions due to erosion, the quality of our water and health and condition of our pond, that Deer Park will hold the township liable in addition to the property owner and his representatives. Number three, the township should please heed the legal opinion provided by the Deer Park attorney to the planning commission on September 1st, 2022. The private stormwater drainage system, including the stormwater detention pond that is wholly located within Deer Park, is administered by Deer Park and is defined under our master deed as a pri, as a general common element owned by Deer Park. The 1988 easement to the township is for construction, repair, replacement, and maintenance of the storm sewer system for the benefit of Deer Park only. No easements exist which grant Mr. Sirakoff's property a right to tie into the common element storm drainage system, and the township cannot require this. In addition, the Macomb County Public Works Drain Office's own procedures and design standards for storm water management explicitly state that it is the responsibility of the developer to secure necessary easements from downstream property owners. The township's own planner advised the same thing during one of the 2022 hearings on this matter. Deer Park, as stated before, does not intend to grant such an easement to Mr. Sirakoff. Our last point is really a request on the behalf of Deer Park that you think very carefully about the ramifications of your decision whether or not to approve the rezoning request. The decision the township makes today will have an impact far into the future, the same as the township's decision on February 12th, 1979, to rezone the property on which Deer Park and Macomb Family Services sit. The properties immediately to the west of 156 and around the corner of Van Dyke to the Fourplex apartment encompass a total of 5.47 acres. If sold and purchased for development, these properties would most certainly qualify for condominiums as they meet the, if they meet the same conditions Mr. Sirakoff has provided the blueprint for. For that matter, there would also be an opportunity to redevelop the Macomb Family Services building as condominiums. Mr. Tremblay was correct when he told the township board at its December 21st, 2022 meeting that rezoning will create a great risk for this whole corner area. As the township's planning body, if you vote to take the risk, which is your prerogative, it's also your job to anticipate and plan for what could occur in the future based on your decision today. Thank you.
Doug Peoples, 11820 Kading Road, and I represent the residents on Kading Street since they were of ill health right at the moment or out of town.
Excuse me if you could pull the microphone a little closer.
Okay, thank you. I submitted a form to their, a letter today, and I'll just read the summary at the top. Since it's the same document we submitted the last time this was proposed, and nothing has changed, and it was also denied then. The development does not conform to the majority of existing bordering property used with single-family zoning and density. There's about a 60% of his border that's R1B, and the rest is other, the various other developments. And the use is incompatible with the recent five-year development of the bordering and immediate surrounding area of single-family units. The conditions section that we received earlier, and I see it's been modified, so we don't know what's on there, the conditions section has no consideration for the majority bordering residential properties along Van Dyke and Kading Road to the north. And the use does not conform to and is incompatible with the planned development patterns as expressed in the township's adopted master plan and have already been expressed tonight. And this was also previously rejected because of the two zoning jumps. The proposed development also falls in all of, the proposed development also fails all of the evaluation standards contained in the Bruce Township zoning ordinance section for development impact statement. And I have about two or three pages of that in here, and the following pages, which you can read. As far as the conditions, I made some notes tonight. It's, he has a note here, each unit contain a minimum of two bedrooms. The plans show three rooms. I think one of them's designed as an office, probably doesn't meet code as a bedroom, but there are three uni, three bed, three rooms in there that could be bedrooms. The proposed site plan condominiums will utilize their township sewer. Does he have access to that? I don't know if you have openings on the sewer or not. And, let's see, also presently, there'd be two zone jumps that was denied last time. And all our wells are 80 feet and deeper. I've, I've contacted everybody, we have at least an 80-foot well, and we're already having problems when they de-watered some of the Timbers development down the road. Across the street, they had to replace their well. And, and that brings to the next point of our neighbor. He says, what about the 6,000 costs to replace wells? That's not contained in the 1,000 cost that he shows here. Also, for the developer preserve, preserve the trees and privacy where feasible. He's made no conditions for anybody to the north or west. Also, his property's located in a, I think it's a forest preservation area as defined by Bruce Township and the county, which he has to meet stringent tree replacement and blockage to the neighbors and light seepage and other things. The water table he talked about, I beg to differ. Those engineers don't know this specific area, that corner out there is a unique area. There's a water outlet there from the whole hillside up to the previous, up to the middle school. There's a layer of aquifer under there that drains into his property and flows under ours. The official, and a note that the official, there's never been an official presentation of a single-family dwellings. You keep on talking about it, but it was never officially presented. And the, I don't know if she mentioned it in her thing, but the Deer Park connections expired in the mid-'90s. Thank you.
Can I get a show of hands to those of you who are here for this particular item? Anyone else want to speak before we close the public hearing?
I was just curious, have you guys looked at the traffic and left any more research on the traffic on West Gate Street? It moves really fast, and adding 16 houses coming across, I live across the street at 163 West Gates. It's already really dangerous as it is. I don't know if you guys ever talked about or discussed that. And I know we're already in a red zone for busing, buses won't pick up our children on that, there's children on four of the six houses on the other side over there, and they won't pick us up for school because it's too dangerous, adding more cars, more people, just adds to the danger of that road.
If no one else speaking, motion to close the public hearing.
So?
Oh, sorry.
Motion by Mike Tremblay, seconded by...
818.
818. And invited by Connie Chapman. 818. Anyone? Although...
Kira Benson?
Yes.
Connie Chapman?
Yes.
Mike Tremblay?
Yes.
Ed Kupitz?
Yes.
Mandy Burnett?
Yes.
Ray Galvestine?
Yes.
Randy Camp?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, back to the commissioners. And Joe, feel free to jump in if you heard anything more clarified, of course.
I have a question for you, Joe. You made a comment that under current zoning, they could put 12 single-family homes in that piece of land.
That's the max, okay.
Excellent. If R1C will be that, do you know what the calculation would be?
I have that written down somewhere. Just one moment, I will dig that number up.
Sure, I've got some numbers for you if you want them.
Sure.
For R1B, minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. So you get 11 in there. Taking the, the gross acreage of 5.2, you'd end up with lot sizes of 20,592. Minimum lot size for R1C is 12,000. The closest you get to that would be 18.
18.
Also, you've got the roadway, you've got the pond, so could be less.
Most likely, somewhat less than that, but yeah, 18 is the absolute max for R1C.
Rick, do you have the numbers for the consent judgment for Medco Timbers?
Let me see here. Medco Timbers was also 5.9 acres, and they are 20 units. Let me see here. I believe they're at approximately 12,850.
Yeah, it's about 3.38 units per acre.
See, something's gonna happen. It's either gonna be condos, it's gonna be currently zoned, no more than 11 homes. If it's challenged, could be more than that. You've got Medco Timbers up the road that, they're already denser than R1B. So I've been hearing in the community that there was a greater appetite for condos, that was the more desirable option. And from the comments tonight, those comments don't back up what I came into this meeting believing.
Oh, the Medco Timbers density that we just established, translated to this site would be about 17, 17 units.
17 units at Medco Timbers?
At Medco Timbers density.
I thought they were 20.
About 17, based on the math we just did? No, it was 17. Yeah, 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 Medco Timbers, if you took that density...
Right, well, I'm taking, yeah, five, for this site, 5.2. At 18, you're 12,584.
Yeah, that's your lot size, yeah.
So, but then, again, with roads, pond...
Yeah, you're probably, it's not 100%.
Joe, your professional opinion, if this were to go to court, if this were voted down today, what's your estimate of what the range could be for potential single-family units?
I don't know that I have a professional opinion on that. It really hard for me to figure out what a circuit court might do with this. Yeah, I would probably want to defer to the township attorney on that one.
Joe, there was a number that we started out with way back in the beginning that I thought came from you. That's a called number that, when this first came up, I think it was 12, was the number of single-family homes? That was under current zoning.
Yeah, yeah. And that's... And that's like an absolute max. If you just convert it up into 12, it's probably, probably less than that. Because you've got to put a road in and you've got to detain your stormwater somewhere. And that's the absolute max, yeah.
I think it's reasonable to ascertain from what we've seen in consent judgments in this township, that there could, there's a real possibility that the developer could be somewhere in the range of 14 to 18 units for the piece of property, single-family homes.
That is possible.
Which is a whole different demographic than what you draw versus condos. And that's what's sitting in my mind today, despite what I've heard from everybody. And I think people out here need to understand that, too. Is that this planning commission is usually very well-versed on what's happened and what's going on. This is not the rural part of our township. It was brought up, we want to keep this rural. This is not, this is the dense part of our township. This is the, this is where we have more density. So really, the issue before us is, is you can say no, the developer could go in and do probably 10 to 11 homes without giving anything. He could go to court and potentially get 14 to 18 single-family homes, which in my opinion would be more intrusive than 20 condos. To the area.
And you wouldn't have the continuity going westward from Deer Park. I mean, you go.
Well, at one, at one point in time, that piece of property was considered, was going to be, as many years ago, but was considered to be an extension of Deer Park, to be developed as condominiums. That, that period has lasted many years, but at one point in time, it was looked at that way. And then the risk of, of the other parcels turning into condos, that would have to be, someone would have to buy all the parcels, tear down the buildings, combine the parcels. What's, what's on my mind is, if you say no, you go to court, you end up with 14 to 18. You want 14 to 18 single-family homes or you want 20 condos?
And I, and I concur with that. Would it be appropriate to take and have a show of hands from those that are representing this concern? What their preference would be if that literally were the two options? Or is that procedurally not correct?
I don't know. It's going to make a big difference. I guess I would ask the commission, is that appropriate for you? I mean, just to see.
They're allowed to come up and make a public comment, so what's the difference if we ask them to raise their hand and who's going to make the first? It's a public comment.
If he went to court, he could get, there's no guarantee that he would get 14 to 18 units. So we're just, projected that is a possibility, right?
Well, it's because of the historical consent judgment in this township. It's not based on just a guess. Menco Timbers was a consent judgment, the person wanted 32 units. We ended up at 20. Equivalent density, I think from our planner said that that would be 17, that property equivalent density. So it's not just a guess, it's a reasonable.
It's not a guarantee, but there's some precedent.
Yes, there's some precedent.
It's an extrapolation.
Yes. There's a possibility, more than every vote possible.
And it is an if. Doesn't if it goes in that direction.
If it goes in that direction.
Call for closing of the public hearing here.
Yeah, yes.
I think in the last meeting, I was the only one who favored condos. And one of the drivers on it was the number of people in a condo versus in a single-family home, where you might have a mom and dad, a couple of kids, and that makes four for a household. And. I preferred the condo and I think it was, I was the only one who voted against, for condos, against the motion. My personal opinion still is that condominiums would be a better solution, which is the number, the right number. I'm not certain what the perfect number is. And the board is looking for us to make any recommendation. Yet I think we're all still kind of not of one mind. So I would, I guess, Joe asking you, is it appropriate, at least for this commission, to make a decision on preference for condominiums versus single-family to express that? Or are we just to, someone make a motion and we all vote on it and we may or may not end up?
I think your preference would be implicit in your decision. If you were to approve or resign RM1, you'd be saying pretty loudly that you prefer attached units.
Well, I'm suggesting there are probably people on this commission who don't want anything.
Well, nothing is probably not what's going to happen. Yeah, I, I think that, I think that that's just reality is something is going to happen there. What it is is depending on what the, you know, zoning is. And, yeah, if you were to recommend approval of an RM1, you would be strongly signaling that you want attached units there. And that would come with these conditions, which say there has to be attached units and there have to be so many. If your recommendation is to deny, then that forecloses attached units as an option under the current zoning. You know, I, obviously, the circuit court group has been discussed in this meeting, but I can't speculate on where that would take us as far as attached or detached units. But, you know, I think that, I think that your recommendations and I signals the kind of units that you're looking for.
If it were condominiums, would you say it would be the number that we would feel comfortable with?
The question in front of you is 20. And if you are not comfortable with 20, then that is obviously a consideration for you as you're making a motion. You know, conditions on a rezoning have to be offered voluntarily by the applicant and the applicant has the right to change the offer if he so chooses. If he wanted to reduce it, he could at this meeting. That is something you could certainly ask him if he's interested in. If he says no, then the condition remains 20 units. That's just how rezoning works under Michigan law. You know, I mean, is there an optimal number here? I mean, I'd probably have to be an engineer to tell you what that was. And I'd probably have to have done a lot of heavy investigation of property to tell you what the, what the optimal number is. It's, an optimal is, it's a very squishy, or use the word optimal, there probably isn't an optimal number. There's probably just some numbers that are, you know, more suited to the property than others.
Rick, you had a lot, a lot to say about the correct number as you looked at the density?
I'm looking at the spreadsheet right now. So Deer Park, 5.9 acres, 20 units. The square foot allocation is 12,850 square feet per unit. With Mr. Sirikoff's full acreage of 5.22 with a house removed, 18 units, he would be at 12,584 square feet per unit, which is a 2% advantage as compared to Deer Park versus the current state of his request, which is 13%.
Just chiming in here, the, the density over Menco Timbers is pretty much identical to the density at Deer Park, 3.38.
Yeah.
So Rick, you, we heard from the representative from Deer Park today that if municipal water comes, they reserve the right to develop further. So that would make Deer Park more dense, which would make the comparison of the law.
That would need to come in to this planning commission.
With what's, with what being proposed here is single-unit wells. So they don't, if they don't leave that space that you would need for a community well. That's the reason for more dense. Deer Park is more dense in the event that a municipal water comes through, so. Just, just something to consider.
Is Mr. Sirikoff's current request with individual wells, does that require an equivalent isolation zone?
Correct.
That occupies 0.7 acres at Deer Park?
Tough call. Anyone formulating a motion that they would like to? So I'm going to look to Mike Tremblay, who's on this commission and board, trustee. What would your advice be also as former chairman for this commission? For someone to make a motion? I think for this commission to grow, for this commission to grow, Mike Tremblay shouldn't be making a motion, understand? And I make, I make a lot of motions for this, for this planning commission. Jared has stepped up a few times. Someone else needs to step up and make a motion and I'll help guide them through if there's things that I think should be added. People aren't going to grow if they don't make motions. And I just can't be the guy that looks on it, because I may not be here for that. I do have my own ideas. I would prefer someone to step up. Anyone? My issue is, I take the position as chairman not to make motions. If I were to make a motion, it would be along the lines of approving a certain number of condominium units. And I looked direct for the number. I'm looking for the proper. You cannot, you cannot propose a different number than what's been proposed by the applicant.
Unless the applicant volunteers.
The applicant volunteers another number. I mean, if you can suggest a different number to the applicant, the applicant would have to propose that. Rick, so what was your number to calculate?
You can also table the vote to next year, or next month.
Right. Yet it's not, it's 18, but as for the dialogue between Mike and I, the difference is, is that Mr. Sirikoff's property, there's no plan for an isolation zone. So actually, Deer Park, they're on 5.2 acres as well usable.
No, Deer Park's on 5.9.
They're 5.9, but usable because that isolation zone, nothing can be built over. If city water comes through, that could potentially make that isolation zone buildable. It's not an easy one for sure.
Yeah, I'm happy to. I guess, I mean, Tom, hearing all this talk about the density and comparisons, is there a willingness to change that 20-unit number?
No, we already removed the house, removed the lot. The original number was 24 because Deer Park does have the right to put an extra four in if the walls are gone. So, you've been reducing it, I hear a lot of times, guys. I give you all the conditions that I could give you, worth of the township, around that size. I think that's a great number and it'll match up real well with the rest of the property. And we are right in the middle of the city district and we're in the middle of a dense part of groups if you did count Goyor. And the surrounding property, if you don't count the Goyor property line, you just count through township. You have way more than 60% of all that land that's ordered around. We did have 19 of the houses last time we were here. Safe when you got the lots, we moved that. But the difference is, maybe we came up with that next one.
But I think technically then the density increased, right? So we declined it at a lower density and you came back higher.
Per unit, yes, but if you divide the acreage, it's less. If you divide the acreage, it's less, but a unit.
It's the known versus the unknown, right? I mean, I think we've talked about this, is we have a product in front of us that we have a good understanding of what it would look like. It's a 55 and older community. We understand what the units would look like and the ranch styles that are not going to be up in anybody's backyard versus the unknown. If we wrote this down, then what can happen? I understand that there's a, I think a preference to not build anything on this property, which I don't think is going to happen regardless of what we decide here. Given all the information that we have, I would make a motion to approve this plan based on the conditions submitted by the developer. Specifically, 55 and older restrictions. Specifically, 55 and older restrictions orbit.
You can just say it's presented on July 5th.
It's presented on July 5th through the 12 bullet points. That it represents a similar density as compared to adjacent properties.
Don't be afraid to go to court. Developer's trying to bully you. He's trying to bully you.
Thank you, Sherwood. I've got acres to approve and I'll be back. All right, I'll make a motion to approve, recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, rezoning the property, 156 West Gates, from the existing zoning of R1B, single-family residential to R1 residential multi-family, with the conditions presented by the applicant, Tom Sirikoff, based on the following. Rezoning appears unlikely to unduly burden utilities and roadways in the area. Rezoning is compatible with the Deer Park condo development to the east, and it was at one time a consideration for an extension of the same. It appears that the development on the parcel could meet the standards of the requested district. This rezoning is consistent with the rezoning of the property known as Deer Park, which would rezone from R1B to R1 in 1988. Traffic study in 2018 reflected a material impact on increased traffic. And the conditional rezoning would be less intrusive with respect to noise and traffic than leaving it zoned as is, or potentially getting something less desirable through a court settlement. I mentioned the senior housing already. And developer is formally committing to relieve some of those that may have the wells temporarily impacted during the watering in a similar way that was addressed by developer in the past.
Motion by Jared. I'll second the motion. Daniel, would you call the roll, please? Further discussion? Daniel, would you call roll?
Sure. Hey, Steve.
Yes?
Barnett?
No.
Kent?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Chapman?
No.
Vincent?
Yes.
Cupid's?
Yes.
So your count was?
Five, yeses, two noes.
Five yeses, two noes, the motion passed. Okay, so let's go on to the board. They will regularly look at our meetings. When something like this is coming up, they'll have everyone's opinion. Sometimes get follow-up calls, asking questions. It'll be at the board meeting whenever that gets scheduled. Mike is--
Two weeks from today. Six o'clock PM in this building.
And Mike is trustee and is on that board, so he has the information--
The board has the final approval.
In there.
Two weeks from today, 6:00 PM.
So we're gonna take a short break.
So what you're gonna do, you're gonna walk into a bunch of old parks and condos right here. It's a bad place to get out anyways, and all you have, old parks getting out there is gonna get hit.
Hi, how are you? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Sometimes more than.
Well, you know, it's in the industrial district, and all that where it should be. And the problem is, the houses that are complaining, oh, I mean, somewhere. It's so, it's across the bay. But I mean, you don't always have a role in being.
There is a memo. And I know you're receiving--
That way you're not blocking the screen while you--
Present.
And you said you need to be out for the--
No. No, I have everything here online, so. I didn't really work for.
IAA, Scotty.
Bring the meeting back to order.
Yeah, sent that other letter.
Yeah.
Somebody--
Yeah, when I did the math, basically, it was like--
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order if everyone could--
Oh, yeah. Okay, I'll do that.
If everyone could take your seats, please, we'll get back in order. Okay, the next topic on the agenda is IAA, SOU. They remind me I need-- We're reopening the meeting at 9:04, it looks like. Okay, so the next topic is IAA, SOU. Sir, do you want to give your presentation?
Good morning, Bob, good morning, good afternoon, good evening, Bob Kirk, 19-500 Hall Road, Clinton Township, Michigan. I'm a municipal and land use attorney assisting the applicant tonight. As you know, they're requesting a special land use on 75 acres on 33 Mile Road. It's an M1 zone. Under special land use, you have eight factors to consider. We've submitted a letter to you addressing those eight factors. There are the usual ones about being harmonious with the area, traffic issues, the size, location. Although we've addressed it in our letter, I'm not gonna go back through it. Bill Dietrich's here from IAA, who can go through the specifics of the type of use that they're gonna have on that site. What's unique with special land use is that you can pin us down with those conditions, that type of use. I've heard some things being said, it might be a junkyard or a part location. It's not going to be, and those could be conditions under special land use. Further, with regard to site plan, I know your planner indicated we didn't provide a full engineered site plan. This is a little bit different in the special land use, because you can also impose conditions on the site plan with regard to buffering, screening, those type of things. So we submitted a conceptual site plan. We can come back with a full site plan following your feedback today. The use we are asking for, request approval for, has minimal impact on these services, water or sewer. So with that, I'll introduce Bill. He'll go through a presentation as to the operation of the company, the operations that will take place on the site.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is William Dietrich. I'm manager of real estate development for Insurance Auto Auctions. I want to thank all of you for your time this evening, and also members of the public who wish to make comments on this matter. I'd like to give you an overview of our company, who we are, what we do, and I'll start with, you know, who are we? This is the type of facility that we build. This is our St. Louis facility. We are, you know, a leading digital marketplace for total loss vehicles, low-value vehicles. We have revenues on the order of $2 billion. So we're a large company. We sell approximately 2.5 million vehicles throughout the U.S., Canada, and the United Kingdom. We have approximately 4,400 employees and over 200 locations throughout the UK, U.S., and Canada. Okay, I've kind of given you all of these previews. My apologies. So we'll go on to the next slide. We are part of a company called Ritchie Brothers Global, RB Global. IAA is a standalone entity. Ritchie Brothers auctions off heavy equipment. They're known in the marketplace as the world leader for auctioning off used construction equipment especially. So, we bring-- leader for auctioning off used construction equipment especially. So we bring to the table our expertise in auctioning off vehicles. This slide shows our footprint, and I show this for two reasons. Most importantly, the communities that are shown here are all like you. They have all the same concerns about our operations, what we do, how we do it. And I'll flip it around and say, if we were truly bad actors and didn't play by the rules, we wouldn't be on this map. We play by the book in every community that we're in, and just by the breadth of where we are, I think you can probably assume all the people in all these communities have kind of the same interests, and we share those interests. Even though we're a big company, we're well-capitalized, we also take responsibility from a financial standpoint for our operations, and especially with respect to environmental issues, which I understand is, you know, a high concern here. We bear the liability for that. So we recognize that if we don't kind of play right and do the right thing, we're going to be in a lot of trouble in terms of playing with regulators to fix things and also paying a lot of money out of pocket. That doesn't help our bottom line. So the fact that we operate in as many locations as we do, and we're constantly opening locations throughout these areas. I mean, just as an aside, I have to travel to Dixon, California tomorrow for a similar appearance there because- Yes, it is, but-
Good job.
We play around the country. This just memorializes the fact that Ritchie Brothers is traded on the New York Stock Exchange. So again, we're a well-capitalized company. A view of how our yards are arrayed. We aren't a junkyard. We are, we do deal with salvage vehicles, low value vehicles, but they're neatly organized. Why? Because that's the most efficient way for us to operate. And you'll notice here, this is what we call a six-pack. We park the cars in their own little slot. This is kind of like going back to high school algebra when you're doing the Cartesian coordinate thing, you got to find the X and the Y. We have all these cars located so that when someone purchases a vehicle, our loader operator knows exactly where to go to pick it up, to drive it out in front for the person who's picking it up. This is a view of our Tampa North facility, and it shows the type of structure, oops, excuse me, the type of structure that we erect for our office building. Single-story typically, paved parking lot for employees and customers, fence behind, you know, landscaping is kind of appropriate for the municipality. All of our vehicles are brought in on tow trucks, typically two-car, four-car tow trucks. And that size requirement is in part dictated by this. This is the loader that literally unloads vehicles that come in, places them in these stalls, and then when the vehicle is sold, the loader will go back out, find the location for this car, pick it up, take it out front, put it on another tow truck, and away it goes. Our operating hours, this is operating hours for public, 8 to 5 Monday through Friday. Now, typically, the branch will open earlier than that, just to get things started, open later, be open later to close things down. Occasionally, they'll work on Saturdays, and that's dictated not, that is not a public office hour, it's dictated by the volume of vehicles that are coming in. For example, there's a big winter snowstorm, and all of a sudden, people are getting into accidents. We get a big influx of vehicles that come in, and we have to be able to kind of manage the influx, you know, we can't have them all sitting out in our drop zone. So we occasionally have to, you know, work overtime for our employees. But again, that's not a public-facing office hour or work time. This is, again, the kind of mode that our vehicles arrive in, and I point it out because the loader operator has to slide his forks underneath the vehicles to get them off the bed in order to take them to an area where we image the vehicles, process them, and then put them into inventory. An important element of our business is that we do not own these vehicles, and that distinguishes us from a junkyard. Why? Because a junkyard owner buys the vehicles for his own profit. That's his asset. So if he thinks, hey, I got this truck for 50 bucks, I can sell the front door off of the passenger side for 100. He'll part it out until, you know, he's got nothing left other than, you know, the frame, and then he'll sell it to a scrap hauler. For us, we don't, we don't do that. Why? Because our vehicles are consigned to us. All of our inventory is, well, most of it, is owned by insurance companies. State Farm, Progressive, Geico, Liberty, USAA, anybody that you can think of, whoever your insurer is, more likely than not, they're a consignor to us. So it's their asset on our property. So why do we do this? Because when an insurance company totals out a vehicle, they'll write you a check, they'll say, here, you know, go find another vehicle, we'll take title to this car or truck. The insurance company does not want that car or truck. So we provide a mechanism for them to realize that last dollar of value on that asset. So even if they stroked a check for $10,000, maybe the car brings $2,000 in auction. Well, that delta now has shrunk by $2,000. Why is that a big deal? Because all of us pay insurance premiums. And if all these cars had to go to landfills, well, then our premiums would be higher. So insurance companies are savvy about how they run their businesses. We act as an intermediary to kind of help them deal with a problem that they don't want to have. They don't want to own cars that are salvage. They don't want to find a place to store the cars, and they don't want to go through the process of selling them. So our business is precisely that role. They consign to us, we collect a fee from them. The buyer purchased the vehicle, we collect a fee from the buyer. So we're like eBay. If I wanted to sell my laptop, I couldn't because it's a company laptop, but if I wanted to sell my laptop, I consign it to eBay. It's my laptop. I pay eBay a fee, they put it on their online auction, somebody buys it at eBay, they pay eBay a fee, and I send my laptop to the purchaser. We do the similar thing with salvage vehicles. And kind of to emphasize the point that all of our auctions are online. We don't do any live auction anymore. I kind of like the live auction format, we're very dynamic, but in this, we've kind of learned through COVID, everybody learned how to buy toilet paper and paper towels from Amazon and have it delivered to the front door instead of going to the grocery store. I'm old school, I kind of like doing that, but hey, stuff has migrated online. Everybody likes the online model, and that's the way we sell our vehicles. We have, you know, a website that people go to to screen vehicles, and we have extensive information about every single car at every single branch that's coming up for auction. So even if you're not so inclined to look, it is interesting from the breadth of vehicles that are offered. And you can be here in Bruce Township, Michigan, and buy a car in Seattle, Washington if you want. You can buy anywhere you want. Now, the flip side is, you have to figure out how to transport it from there to here, but you're given the opportunity to buy whatever you want anywhere throughout the United States, including Hawaii and Alaska. Our branches are set up to primarily deal with or interact with customers who, by and large, are the tow truck operators. They will be either picking up title, making payments, et cetera. We also have public customers who come in, and they typically will be there to pick up their personal effects. So if someone gets in an accident, the car gets towed away, oh, shoot, they didn't have a chance to get all the stuff out of the car that they wanted. So they come to the branch, we take their items that are in the vehicle, put them in a, you know, a nice banker box, and they take their personal belongings away. As I mentioned, deliveries occur on tow trucks. You'll see these two vehicles, obviously, they're damaged. The vehicles are sold in the same condition that they come in. So if you look at that and say, ooh, I'd like that driver door there on that BMW, okay, you can't buy the driver door from us, you have to buy the entire BMW. If you say, well, I don't really want it, it's like, that's, that's what we do. You have to buy the whole thing. Once a vehicle comes in, it's checked in. That is, we take photo documentation from numerous angles, we record whatever information is there about the odometer and any other information that's kind of publicly available, and all that goes online. We believe in, you know, providing as much information as possible to our buyers. We get lots of different stuff beyond just vehicles. It's semi-tractor trailers, mobile homes, you know, ice, snow machines, motorcycles, I've seen threshers, you name it. If it's insured by an insurance company, it could very well end up being consigned to us for auction. As I mentioned earlier, all the vehicles are sold in the same condition that they come in. So that BMW, if you want the, you know, front headlights, you have to buy the whole BMW. The important point for you is that we don't part out vehicles. If a tow truck comes, or a pickup truck comes in and the front bumper fell off, well, it'll go in the bed in the back, and it's sold as one unit. We don't sit there and say, well, the bumper fell off, so we'll just sell the bumper. No, it's the insurance company's property. They want to realize if that bumper is only worth a dollar, they want that dollar in their pocket. So we have a duty to them, contractually as their fiduciary, to sell it as they consigned it. So all the vehicles are sold in the same condition that they come in. We don't do work on vehicles. Again, for the same reason that the insurance company says, it's our property, sell it. You know, get it out there, get it sold, give us the money. So we don't have, you know, bays where we drain fluids, do upgrades, repair things, you know, take parts off, put new parts on. None of that occurs. Vehicles come off of the tow truck, they're imaged, they're put in our inventory, that inventory is auctioned online, the buyer comes with their tower and takes the vehicle away. And this is my last slide. We have an extensive website and, you know, spend a lot of time and effort to inform our buyers. So that concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You're next.
I want to be. So we'll take it over to you for your thoughts as I prepare for the public hearing.
Sure, the planning commission was provided with a review letter. And the overarching point of the review letter is that, as was mentioned by the applicant's attorney earlier in the presentation, they have not submitted a full engineered site plan at this point. So tonight, they appear to be seeking some feedback from the planning commission to tell them how to flesh out that site plan. And as far as this planning commission is concerned, final approval can't be granted until we have site plans. So some sort of postponement is going to be in the off-endsy thing. And I just wanted that to be clear to everybody that we don't have something that we can take final action on here. And at any rate, this is a special land use, so it is a recommendation to the township board. And when we do get to that point of having a motion to recommend, it will be the same thing as the rezoning that we had before where the planning commission makes a recommendation and the township board takes the final action. So we're at 14381 East 33 Mile Road. This was approved for a private road a couple years ago under the name Bruce Tech Park. So a good chunk of that's been installed, actually. I haven't been over there to see if it's fully completed, but there is a lot of it in there. At any rate, that did include a detention basin at the northeast little spur of the site. So they've got 75 acres here. There are, the building that they're proposing is 10,000 square feet. We don't have further details of it than that, but they did give us the square footage. The applicant has described the operations of the business, so I'll skip that part of the letter. M1 industrial zoning, vacant except for that private road at the moment. The surrounding zoning is all industrial, but some of the uses are not. So to the north, there's a utility corridor that has M1 zoning, and then on the other side of that, we have residential zoning. To the east is the Lions playing fields. To the south, we have some industrial site condominiums that are kind of filling up with site plans. And then to the west, some of that is vacant with M1 zoning, and then there is that senior living facility there to the west, on the south half of that property line. Looking at the dimensional standards in our zoning ordinance for the M1 district, the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. 75 acres is certainly larger than that. Same with the minimum lot width, we're well over that. We look at the front setbacks. These deal with the distance from the property line to a building. Their building is pretty interior to the site, so it is 412 feet from the nearest property line, which is the front property line. And then the other thing it has to meet, the front setback is the fence, because we do not allow a fence in a required front yard, and they have set the fence back more than 35 feet from the right of way. The building height was also given in the set of plans, and that does meet the 30-foot height limit for the district. So we have some building appearance standards, but they only apply when a building is within 200 feet of front lot line. In this case, the building is twice that from the front lot line. They do not have an elevation included in their plans, as I alluded to, but nevertheless, our appearance standards don't apply at that distance. We looked at the required off-street parking. We did a kind of general industrial, one space for 500 square feet analysis here, found that 18 spaces would be required, given that there are some off-site people coming to this site. We generally don't have more than that. They are providing 27. Look at off-street loading requirements. We do have a requirement for off-street loading space. That's a 10 by 50-foot loading space for the first 20,000 square feet of building. So one loading space we require here, this being the type of use that it is, and actually has a lot more loading than that, like there's a whole, it's like a couple acres in the front that are basically devoted entirely to a space where carriers can come in and- drop off vehicles. And we don't have a great deal of detail as to what that looks like or how it operates on the site plan at the moment, so that's something that we might consider discussing with the applicant. What does that look like? How does that operate? Is there potential to put some screening in place that might hide some of those operations? What do they need in terms of an opening in the front? Because, you know, once you get the vehicle in there, if you've got the space, you can maybe move around, so. Definitely something to discuss with the applicant. We do have a parking lot landscaping requirement, and based on the size of the parking lot that they're providing, that requires five TMs, which would be placed somewhere in the vicinity of the parking lot, the building, in the center of the site. Of course, there's going to be a lot more vehicles on the site than just the ones in the 27 parking spaces, but the other ones are considered to be stored rather than parked. We do have green belt berman wall standards. So Section 519 of the zoning ordinance requires a green belt with a four to six-foot tall decorative fence or wall, or a berm between any use and an existing residential use. So the only existing residential use we have is the senior living facility to the west. That used to the east is, the playing fields there is also, of course, non-industrial use despite its zoning. The applicant is showing 50-foot buffers on the east and west sides of the properties, 30-foot buffer along the rear property line, and a 38 to 48-foot buffer along the front lot line, it varies a little bit. They haven't provided a landscaping plan, so the nature of what would go in those buffers is not known at the moment, but that is something I think they're wanting to hear from you on. So that is definitely a topic of discussion this evening, particularly with respect to where that residential use is. The planning commission and township board may require screening of the use to meet the standards of special land use approval that are found in Section 62.2 of our zoning ordinance, which are included in the letter. As far as the fence is concerned, they've not specified a type of fence or a style, but they do show a ringing the property, and it kind of goes into the property in some places to mark off the different zones of the property. And as I said, it is setback greater than 35 feet from the front property line. So outdoor storage, we have a couple of standards that deal with outdoor storage in our ordinance. None of them are exactly calibrated to a very large car lot. We do have a set of standards for the storage of operable vehicles, or if you have a fleet of vehicles or something. I included those standards in the letter so that you can see how we treat that use, because fundamentally, you have vehicles being stored in that use, and you have vehicles being stored in this use. Different circumstances for the storage, but nevertheless, it seems like these standards might be something you want to reference when you're thinking about how we might describe use like this. One of the standards in there, incidentally, is that no storage or parking is stored of vehicles, shall occur within 100 feet of residentially zoned property. So residentially zoned property would be property zone A1, R1, we have RS, sorry, A1. We have a bunch of different residential zoning districts in our zoning ordinance. The distance across the utility easement to the north is about 200 feet, just for Moving past those standards, item 12 in the letter, they don't show a trash enclosure on the plan, so how they're going to address any waste produced on site is something that we should address with them. Exterior lighting, they've not indicated how the site will be lit. I know from discussions with them at a pre-application meeting that the site is pretty heavily camered and is monitored remotely. But as far as the lighting on the site, if I recall correctly, they were saying that the site is not very heavily lit, but we do need to have them speak to that on the I've kind of given a little rundown of some of the things that will need to be included on a final site plan. I can kind of go past that for the moment. We do have some criteria for special land use approval, it's items A through H here under item 15 in the letter. And they give us kind of a set of guardrails for whether or not we should approve a special land use. And I can certainly address any of them specifically for you tonight if you'd like me to, but otherwise, I'll throw it open for questions to the planning commission.
Joe, I, one of my questions is lighting, or lighting requirements that we have for a site this size and nearby neighbors. Anything specific to this type of use? I think what I heard was that the lights are out at night.
Yes, the only lighting in the evening will be kind of safety lighting on the exterior of the office building, just to illuminate, you know, kind of ingress egress, for example, you know, for fire department access in the unfortunate event of a fire. But the perimeter of our properties do not have high tower lights that, you know, are on in the evenings. So we do have camera poles that hold the security cameras that Mr. Tengary mentioned, but they don't have, you know, kind of floodlights or anything like that. It's not like a new car dealership where you have high tower lights showing off their inventory, we don't do that.
Guard dogs?
No.
So, Joe, even though it's limited lighting, they would still need a lighting plan for...
Sure, yeah, you know, they need to show us in the fixtures, meet our standards, and they're, you know, I mean, it seems pretty clear that they wouldn't be throwing light onto other properties, but nevertheless, we need that photometric sign.
Joe, so what's derived in the special land use? Is it, you don't specify this type of operation, outdoor stores, like what is driving...
Exactly, yeah, it's not really a specified use in our ordinance, and that drives us to the special land use process. We have the most similar thing we've got in our ordinance with the special land use in this district.
How many vehicles will be stored on this property?
Well, you know, maximum number is somewhere on the order of 11,000.
And what's your inventory turn?
Well, four to six times a year. So, you know, anywhere, we would see an influx, you know, ingress egress from roughly 45,000 to 65,000 cars. Our auctions are held every week, and this location, like every location, sees a very large turnover in its inventory, number one. Secondly, there are very, very few branches nationwide that run at capacity all the time. So to give you an 11,000 number, that would be kind of, okay, all the elements conspire to put a lot of wrecked vehicles on the road. So, you know, we just deal, we have the footprint to deal with the anticipated volume. Detroit is growing. We already have, you know, a branch down in Belleville, and this facility is intended to kind of add capacity in a growing market for us.
So the question I have is, so it's 11,000 vehicles, inventory turn four to six, is that 11,000 in, 11,000 out would be one turn?
Correct.
So if you have four, that would be movement of 88,000 vehicles?
No, roughly 40, I said 45,000 to 65,000 cars per year.
That doesn't, if you've got 11,000 in your turn four times, 11,000 in, 11,000 out, the math is 80...
No, 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 I'm just counting at once, so, you know, I'm looking at the footprint of the site saying there's 11,000 cars there. So if I have to replace those 11,000 cars four times in the year, that meant that I went through 44,000 cars.
But that would be 44,000 cars going out and 44,000 cars coming in?
Yeah, yeah.
So a total of 88,000 cars would be trips?
Yeah, I heard the term trips, yeah.
I understand, it's 88,000 vehicles being moved in a year with an inventory turn of four?
No, it's only 44,000. It's the same way, you know, that one car comes in, one car goes...
4,000 coming in, 44,000 coming out, we're going to be bringing more back in, right?
Yeah, but that's part of the whole second turn. The first turn is, the first 40, 11,000 cars are there. You know, they came in, then they go out. I consider that one turn. Okay? Now, if you're counting trip...
11,000 times two, because you've got an in and out then?
Right, that's trips, that's a different metric to consider. So we can address that separately, but I understand what you're saying now.
How many, how many days per week of operation are vehicles coming in and out? Yeah, I'm speaking over here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is this a Monday through Friday operation, or Monday through Saturday, or seven days a week?
Principally Monday through Friday, because those are our typical hours. Now, sometimes we have this drop zone area where vehicles are brought into our property. And there are some towers that we work with that are given access to that portion of our property after hours. It's not everyone and anyone, because once it's behind the fence, essentially, it's our responsibility to take care of it. So you might say you have to have special privileges, so could somebody show up with the result of, you know, an accident on 69 at 3:00 in the morning? It's possible, depends. But that's not the normal order of our business. We don't run 24/7, 365. Monday through Friday is our standard period of operation.
I just did a kind of a crude calculation here, taking, you know, four turns in a five-day operation, figure, you know, approximately 250 days per year, and that equates to 176 vehicles per day.
That's reasonable, yeah.
Wait, what did you do, Mr. Man?
I'm taking the conservative number, only 44,000, could be higher. The conservative number, 44,000, based on, you know, four turns...
Just use 65.
Including the first. And based on approximately 250 days of operation per year, that divides out to approximately 176 vehicles per day.
Six vehicles on a truck, how many trucks?
If I could ask the folks, you know, this is the time that the commission is talking to the petitioner. We're going to open this up in a little bit and listen to every one of your comments, but it's a little difficult sitting here and trying to listen to these folks and then try to ignore the other comments. I'd appreciate it if you would just hold back for us, please. Thank you.
So do you get what I was trying to share? You got it, Ed?
And if I, if I may just add a kind of further comment, that presumes that every single car comes in individually. That's not always the case. As I mentioned, we have two-car, four-car haulers, so, you know, if you take your 176 number divided by two, okay, you have, you know, 80 vehicle influx per day. Divide it by four, you've got less, so just...
Sure comment, but we could take and goose it up to six turns.
Sure, sure.
So, I mean, it's somewhere between 100 and 200.
Yeah.
A question, now, you shared that all the vehicles without, I mean, I'm asking here, is this without exception, they are removed from the tow trucks with the forks?
Yes, and I'm thinking, I'm pausing because I'm thinking of the example that I just gave you. You know, the tower coming in at 3:00 in the morning.
But I mean, you're not having large, I mean, well, posed as a question, do you ever have large hallways come in with more than two, more than four? I mean, typically, the kind of hallways that are used to deliver new cars to dealers?
The only time that would happen is when vehicles are being picked up. And that, the pickup is at the discretion of the buyer. And some, you might say, transporters aggregate buyers. So it may be an eight-car hauler, but the tow truck operator is picking up for four or five individual buyers. So we don't control that, how the buyers arrange their transport. Now, that said, it's infrequent because they're more difficult to work with. They have all their various ladders that make it a little more difficult to place the vehicles. So they do appear, but they are not the bulk of what brings vehicles in or takes vehicles away from our property. Sure, sure.
And part of my work-life career was automotive, and, you know, retail automotive, I was a service manager for a while, and, you know, dealt with tow truck operators, dealt with car hallways, and, you know, as, I'm sure you would agree, I mean, the vehicles are not just placed on either variant. I mean, they're cinched down with come-alongs, safety chains, straps, and, you know, use of those items, I mean, it's, when guys are in a hurry, it can be a noisy operation.
Yes, I mean, I...
And you have no way of controlling it, because these aren't your drivers, they're independent, independent tow truck operators, correct?
Yeah, by and large.
Or hallways?
Yep.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
And how many of these operators or loaders are operating at any one time moving cars? Is it one, is it multiple?
Oh, you mean the big yellow vehicles? You know, a yard like this could potentially have four or five. So, you know...
Hours of operation? At midnight, they stop at 9:00?
We pretty, they will more or less be operating during, you know, our public business hours, now, as I mentioned earlier, especially at the end of the day. Say it's 4:45, a tower shows up, he drops off a vehicle. Well, we have a contractual obligation with our insurance companies to get those inventoried within 24 hours. And if it's brought in on a day, the clock has already started. So sometimes we'll have to work, and as I mentioned, you know, after that 5:00 public period, but we will get it imaged and then transport it into the inventory, but it's not like they're going to be operating 10, 11:00 o'clock at night.
What kind of surface material is used in these yards? I know from the picture, it's something that looked like asphalt, somewhere concrete, somewhere gravel. Is there a standard? What do you guys typically do?
We use, you know, typical materials that are used in Bruce Township. We'll use crushed stone, recycled asphalt pavement. It really comes down to economics, and, you know, what's the kind of the lowest cost material to put in place to essentially stand up to the loader traffic? Because those vehicles are 35,000 pounds unloaded, you know, and you put a vehicle on the forks, you're 45,000, they're moving it back and forth, they make turn... on the forks, you're 45,000, they're moving it back and forth, they make turns, so, we spend a lot of money on the dirt, which, you know, that's kind of what we have to do. We have to protect the yard and build it up so that we don't get lots of ruts. And, you know, by extension then, we make certain that, you know, the surface materials, when it's originally constructed, meet the structural engineering standards and are still cost-effective.
If you have wrecked vehicles coming in there all the time, and you have gravel, how do you stop gas, oil, hazardous materials from going into the soil?
Most fluid loss occurs at the accident scene. That's why typically, as part of any kind of fire department emergency response to, especially a major accident, you'll have a hazmat crew following along. So if a car's gonna have its, if it has its gasoline tank crushed, all that fluid is gonna leak out at the point of impact, which is the accident scene. Any residuals, more often than not, leak out in the transport from that accident scene ultimately to us. Now, vehicles, yes, they will arrive with gasoline in their tanks, you know, oil in their crankcases, but when we place them, they're just sitting there. They're not doing anything. No, they won't necessarily be dripping, but even if they are, it's gonna be de minimis. How many quarts of oil do you have in a truck?
When you rotate that many vehicles a day, a week, whatever, half of them could have a little leak, and it's gonna build up, and it's gonna go, especially into gravel, it's gonna go into the soil. So you can't tell me none of them leak.
Oh, I'm not saying they do-
With that many vehicles, it's gonna add up.
I'm not saying they don't leak, but, two things. Number one, we build a profile. It's not like I have two inches of gravel and then it's bare dirt. It will probably be at least 18 inches of material, that is, millings, asphalt, crushed stone, whatever. So, there's a lot of material there to build up before you even come anywhere near to-
So you have a bigger pile of hazardous waste, that doesn't-
No, no.
Well, just because it soaks into the gravel doesn't mean it goes away.
No, it doesn't soak it, well-
It's a bigger pile of hazardous waste.
Well, there are regulations that apply to releases, and there are thresholds for reporting those releases. If we had a release that met those thresholds, we would report it. Otherwise, our operations deal with them on a daily basis to clean them up when they're discovered. So we don't just simply let stuff drain out and say, oh, well, we don't care. No. Because ultimately, we carry the liability for the cleanup. If I truly have every single location that I showed you on that map being nothing other than a huge hazardous waste site, I would have more problems than General Electric with respect to environmental. I don't. And GEO's billions to clean up. We don't have that. Why? Because we don't have catastrophic releases. Whatever minimal releases there are, are addressed and taken care of. In the event that there were something that, you know, say a full tank on a pickup truck leaked out, let's just assume 50 gallons, that would immediately trigger our operations manager to call our national environmental consultant, get them out, they would report it as required, they would deal with it in terms of what the regulatory standards are to remediate it and restore it, and whatever contaminated material is created would be taken away to an appropriate landfill. So, we play by the book. I understand your concern, and I know how you're working through an additive situation where there isn't any response, that's not us. We don't just let stuff leak out all day long and it accumulates over a long period of time. We would, we would be bankrupt if we did that. So, I understand your concern. Thank you.
Joe, for special land use of this type, there's no requirement for a traffic study, correct?
I mean, the use itself doesn't really trigger one, I mean, the size of the site obviously is very large, and the traffic that's generated from it is really what we've been talking about.
Yeah, I just want to go over some numbers with the applicant, and, so if we use your number, 65,000 vehicles move a year, we use 250 working days a year, that's 260 vehicles move a day with the map. With the two-unit hauler, that's 130, over nine hours would be 14 trucks in an hour. With three, it's 87 over nine hours, which would be 10 an hour. At four, 65 over nine hours, or seven an hour. And the only reason I bring this up is because to the west of you, there's a, in between M-53 and U, there's 130-unit subdivision that's almost built out. There's also another 170 units, multifamily units, to be developed, and I'm just concerned about the truck traffic. That's just with the numbers that I just did, based on what I told you.
I understand, and, you know, with all due respect to you, that's kind of the type of issue you have to face. We are looking for-
This is the nature of business.
Yeah, we're looking for a manufacturing zoning, this is manufacturing zoning.
But you're not moving back.
It's proximity to, you know, residential is kind of the, an artifact of your zoning plan.
I think the hard thing is to calculate that against, compared to what, if something else goes in there, what's the traffic gonna be? It's not zero, right? So, if you have 100 employees, if you have materials moving in and out, there's gonna be some uptick. I mean, some other considerations, just the tax will pay, too.
Sure.
If you have multiple industrial buildings versus a storage yard, there's a little big difference in taxes, whether it's to the area.
And employee vehicles are smaller, and the trucks that are coming in not with you alone.
Well, I don't, have you ever checked out the roundabout at 33 Mile? I want to see you get an eight-carrier truck around there.
Really make a consideration, when you-
It's made for bicycles, so, you haven't checked it out.
It's not made for bicycles either. I wouldn't ride bicycles. I'm a rider.
You couldn't get one of those big car carriers around there, because it's-
Okay, if I could just intervene for a second, we're obligated to go to a public hearing.
Yep.
A lot of our conversation, like, from the folks there, I'm sure you've heard some of the things that are mentioned here, you can just say, I agree with that particular comment, not dwell on it too much to get that part. We will ask you, we have additional questions, so, I have no idea if you have one spokesperson or multiples. So we're gonna open up the public hearing, and then you can-
We're gonna vote on the approach.
I'd like to open the public hearing at 9:54.
Second.
9:54, open by Connie, second in your line.
I'm Stuart Lane Stuart.
We have to vote, just a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. No she cares.
Okay, my name is Stuart Lane Stuart, 74360 Judge's Court, Bruce Township. Getting back to the environmental impact of things leaking out of cars, most of the stuff's gonna be at the wreck site. That might be so, but you can't tell me that 11,000 vehicles coming in there aren't gonna drip something every day, seven days a week, all year long. And if you're gonna have 77 acres of cars for a lifetime, that's a lot of drips. What's it gonna do to the traffic on Van Dyke Freeway coming up this way? It can't go to Roundabout, two bicycles can't go through there. You'll go down 32 to Powell and come back around. It's a bad deal, think about it.
I see a smile on Mike. Jim Santilli, 75773 Elkhorn in Bruce Township. Just real quick, I didn't come for this subject, but feel the need to comment. So, I got 22 years of public safety experience, primarily transportation safety, obviously with a focus on highway safety. A few things I just want to bring up, so, we're talking about, you know, vehicles. I think a trip generation should be done. I know it was mentioned that, you know, maybe it's not required, but I see municipalities do this for much smaller projects, even putting in a Kroger, so I think that's something that should be done, but I think we need to ask ourselves, how is this gonna affect traffic in the area? Are we gonna see increased road deterioration? Based on my experience, the answer would be yes, because you're gonna have heavier vehicles on the road. What's it gonna do also for safety in the area? You know, a thing that I didn't hear talked about, you know, and this is something, you know, we all see being pushed, electric vehicles. The feds are pushing it, the automotive manufacturers are pushing, I'm gonna be honest, and this is matter of fact, both entities never talk about the safety side. I'm not gonna get into all the details on that, because it's not pertinent here, but my agency, we're setting up an electric vehicle safety task force, but, you know, I've been talking to a lot of fire chiefs primarily down in Florida, because they have a lot of electric vehicles. You know, one of the issues they have are, you know, electric vehicle fires. So vehicles are involved in a crash, they have an electric vehicle fire, a lot of the times, while they're towing it to the tow yard, it reignites on the tow truck, so they're having to actually have fire personnel follow the vehicle. You know, you got reignition of fires at the tow yards, you know, so a lot of these-
interruption, but we have our three-minute rule, and there's gonna be a lot more people?
He's representing all of you. Well, quite a few of us. He gets five.
So, you know, spacing, that's something that needs to be talked about, too, because at these yards, the spacing has to be further out, but I think you really need to involve the fire department on this one. Do we have the personnel, the apparatus, are we gonna be able to handle this, you know, with these potential fires? Because again, in these crashes, you get a lot of battery cell damages and fires as a result. Common risk for firefighters and first responders, electric shock up to 400 volts, extremely high temps and thermal runaway, toxic fumes, lithium burns, respiratory and skin. When they're fighting these fires, you get toxic runoff. That's a matter of fact. In fact, even NTSB and the chief of Fort Lauderdale both stated that, I could send a link to a video y'all can watch. So that's obviously hazardous for our community. You know, I saw the map up here, I saw Detroit, Grand Rapids, Flynn, it was mentioned that we're similar to these communities. We're not Detroit, we're not Grand Rapids, and we're not Flynn, we're Bruce Township. You know, we're supposed to be a, we're supposed to be a rural community, and that's what, you know, what I saw the township board members ran under. You know, reignition of the fire up to 24 hours after extinguishment, even just moving the vehicles. I know NTSB mentioned they had a situation where they just slightly lifted a vehicle and it reignited. So, I think there's a lot of other things that need to be discussed, the increased water supply, big fire, hot fire, more water is needed, and, you know, the potential of fighting different fires, Class A, B, C, and D. Randy, I know, you probably know some of this, but, you know, again, I think you need to consider a lot of other things. This is Bruce Township, let's keep it rural, you know, let's keep it a safe community.
Good evening, commissioners, I'm Justin Raz, Raz Building Development for Strategic Business Park, 13743 33 Mile Road. I think everybody's comments here tonight are valid, however, I think we're overlooking the bigger issue. When Bruce Tech Park was approved, it was approved for manufacturing use, M1 zonings for manufacturing. In the ordinance, under manufacturing M1, you can have ancillary outdoor storage uses for manufacturing. These guys are selling product, auctioning online, it's a great business. I give them all the credit in the world for being an international company. I think it's great. This is not what this property was zoned for. This is not what the development that has been installed was intended for, okay? In Flynn, the gentleman just mentioned their, their location in Flynn, I looked up their zoning earlier. It is industrial. You have a planned industrial district, you have one piece of property in the whole community, and a hospital group owns it. This is not industrial property, it's manufacturing, light manufacturing at that. It has no peripheral for outdoor storage of vehicles and this business model. So that's really what you need to take into consideration. Does it fit the zoning district? Simple as that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Janet Patani, 71582 Julius Drive. I'm one of those 130 little site condos that you're talking about. I am with me, and I'll give it to you tonight, 52 of our residents have signed this opposing this special use for this property. I do not want to live down the road from a parking lot. I have a $350,000 home, I don't want to be, you know, I don't want to talk about the road usage for heavy trucks. And again, that's a two-lane road on 33, and so is McKay. McKay has enough traffic as it is that we don't need tow trucks going down there. So I don't know who would like this, but these are 52 of our residents from Cloverfield Village.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we answer all the letters that we receive as our attorney. Letters, that- Letters.
Evening, Sam Kilberg, 39577 Woodward Avenue, Suite 300, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 48307. I am counsel on behalf of Orchard Grove, Trilogy Health Services, who owns Orchard Grove, which is the senior living, independent living facility that was talked about earlier. That's directly to the west and abuts this proposed applicant. And we're here to oppose this development, for the obvious reasons. Our residents don't want it, we are actually actively currently trying to lease the property. We're about at 60% to 70% occupancy, we're expecting to be fully occupied by the end of this year, and we're gonna have residents who are going to be complaining and that don't want to live next to this parking lot, quite frankly. You know, Trilogy Health Services came, came to you with this plan, and we understand the zoning of where we're at in the industrial park, manufacturing, but we were approved for our development. We partnered with this township. We built a $35 million health complex that has independent and senior living facilities as an asset for this community, for its citizens to live there as they age out, so they don't have to leave. And we've done our part, we've built a beautiful complex, and we, and we love being there, we love working with the township, but we did not anticipate having this type of use directly next to us. And we didn't anticipate that because the ordinance does not contemplate it, does not contemplate having this type of outdoor storage. If you look specifically at the ordinance, we're really trying to fit a round peg into a square hole. The retail use section, 1613.116C4, retail uses which have a warehouse or industrial character by reason of enclosed outdoor storage requirements or activities. This ordinance does not contemplate outdoor, large vehicle, you know, car dealerships. Even the outdoor storage component that was cited too has a specific section that says not within 100 feet of residentially zoned properties. Now, we understand that we're not residentially zoned, but we are a residential use. The ordinance contemplates that this type of outdoor storage isn't supposed to be next door to residential. And so, you know, we are here to oppose it for the, for many of the reasons stated, I'm not gonna belabor the point, but we want you to look at the ordinance, I mean, this was not contemplated, and we are adamantly going to fight against this development. Thank you.
Zach Simpson, 71425 Julius Drive, I live in Cloverfield Village as well. Rick, fellow car guy, I've been in the business for 10 years, worked in all different departments, rather large dealership group that I do work with, so we get a lot of those total vehicles that do come on down our way to go over to the body shop first, to be checked out by those insurance companies, to see if they are indeed totaled before they go off to places like this. There are trails of fluids going all the way through, they're not left at the scene. Our lot is covered in oil and everything else back by the body shop. I know that he had stated that, you know, just let things sit. If we pull up the Houston South location, there was actually four big oil puddles, I counted, right in front of their neatly organized area they've got going on there. And, you know, 11,000 units sitting there, I mean, that's just multiplied over, you know, throughout the year. How can- over, you know, throughout the year. Um, how congested that area already is in that roundabout. Um, I mean, we already have trucks taking out poles. If anybody remembers the area, there was a, uh, cone on one of the poles for a while because it was a joke how many times it got hit. So that many vehicles coming back and forth. Uh, the development that we spoke earlier about, the high-traffic area down, you know, down that road there, school buses can't pick up kids. This is a young neighborhood. I've got a young son. There's going to be school buses already coming back and forth, and I don't want my kids, you know, standing on that corner with all this traffic going back and forth. Um, that's really, really all I got. Thanks, guys.
Hi, Ron Soliga, 12328 Frank Drive, um, Bruce Township. And, uh, just, yeah, quickly going through some of the math, I, uh, deal in, you know, a lot of hydraulics. We sell industrial hydraulics. And looking over some of the math that, uh, we put out here today, 65,000 cars being transported daily. If half those vehicles lose a quart of fluid, whether it's through leakage of tubes, whether it's through rupture tanks, small pinholes and linings, things of that nature, transmission fluids, gasoline, oil, um, glycol coolant, you're looking at over 8,000 gallons of fluid a year. And, um, you know, that's pretty a substantial amount from just some quick calculations here. So, uh, I know when we have a hydraulic leak, and we have, you know, a hose burst on some of the front-end loaders or forklifts, you have to get out there and you have to make sure that fluid's taken up off the, uh, the pavement, the concrete, um, and done in the proper manner before that fluid seeps into the ground and into the earth. So unless somebody's monitoring that on a daily basis, I think it would be pretty hard to catch 8,000 gallons. Um, other than that, I kind of echo what everything, everybody else has said today. Uh, thank you.
How's everybody doing today? My name's Raymond Monroe. I just got back from Tennessee. I haven't been home tonight because I knew this meeting was important. I work for Nissan and the same company Zach does, only I work at the imports on Crocs and 15, and I can tell you, cars are coming. Lots of cars. Our company got bought out by a company in Oregon called Lithia. And believe me, the parking lot exploded with wrecks, cars, anything that's sellable. He mentioned snowmobiles, he mentioned RVs. Believe me, go to the parking lot up in Flynn, it's a same corporation, or he knows the name. It's called Odessa. And I go there, and it's a mess. They sell cars. It's all about the dollar. But my concern is your grandkids, my grandkids, and our kids in the subdivision. I just bought the house and it's for 400 and some thousand. You're going to park it. I back up to, I back up to the road. So I just got the patio board. I come home and I hear this news. Everybody else has got to be mad, right?
Yes.
It's not easy moving when you don't like something and you move there because you did like it. I'm done.
Good evening. My name is Carol Garcia, 11876 Twin Brook Drive. Um, to piggyback on a lot of things that I've heard here in regards to people that worked at the auto industry, myself, I have 39 years with General Motors. And I've inspected, I've, um, used to work with a doctor, go out to find employees' jobs, and I can tell you, being in the body shops there, full of toxic chemicals. What scares me the most, like the gentleman before me, couple guys before, the batteries, these new electric vehicles, I can tell you, they explode. There's a lot of firemen that are afraid to even deal with them because they could explode on them. On top of that, they just had a bus explode because of the lithium battery. So I'm just saying, we need to really think this out. And I moved up here to the rural area because I wanted to be in the country, because I like the peaceful atmosphere. And I can tell you right now, between 3:00 and 5:00, the traffic on M53 is horrible. It's like bumper to bumper. We don't have enough road. It's like one lane. So I'm just saying, this is a horrible idea, and I'm totally opposed to it. I want to keep it rural out here like we have it, and I'm opposed to this. Thank you.
Name is Mike Jones, 12470 Glasgow. Um, I work for a local company where I do forecasting with IHS data, and I just want to say all the concerns about batteries, it's common. Okay, it's not, um, a myth at all. Already the automotive has put out to us that they're going to go up to 30, 40% batteries in vehicles. It's going to happen, and they'll be storing them right over there. It's a whole new kind of haz ways, and all the concerns that these people have stated about it are completely true. Thank you.
Seeing no one. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion, close the public hearing.
Second?
Yeah, 10:13.
Okay, so Connie made the motion to close. I'm going to second the motion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion carried. Five years, we could see five. Back to the commission, and any additional comments Joe wants to make?
I don't have anything to add at this time.
So Joe, you, you stated at the beginning that because there's no site plan committed, what are we actually debating?
So, um, a couple of things. One, there's the use itself. So we have our criteria and our ordinance. Does this use meet those criteria to prove a special land use? That's probably the most important discussion here. Once you get to that, I mean, there's also all of the different elements of a site plan. If they're, if we're going to be talking about, um, you know, the possibility of approving something like this, then we need to talk about, well, how do we screen it and what other things are we looking for, you know, in terms of what conditions we put on the use. But the, before you get to that, the use itself is what needs to be discussed. Is this right for this location?
But because there's no site plan, are we, would we be making a motion to approve or deny? Or is it a directional outcome of what we expect?
Yeah, you certainly can't make a motion to approve because you don't have a site plan. As far as a motion to deny, um, strictly speaking, I suppose you could make one if you were, if you felt that the use just, it was not a way that you felt that it could meet the, um, the criteria in your ordinance. Um, but, uh, that's of course a matter of discussion for you. But, um, yeah, strictly speaking, a motion to deny if you felt that those criteria just could not be met. That's, that's a possibility. I recommend denial, I should say, because this does go before.
So Joe, in the, uh, in the ordinance for M1, the types of uses, anything close to this in our current, uh, examples, sites within the community, this would be a first, potentially?
Uh, yes, certainly. Certainly, we don't have anything on this scale. Um, but, um, yeah, we don't really have anything similar to this that I can think of.
Didn't we have somebody come before this a couple of months ago on the south side of 33, similar area? They'll ask about, uh, outdoor storage.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Would that end up being a similar type of request? I, I don't recall. I thought that was-
That was landscaping type stuff.
Was it?
Yeah, landscaping and operable equipment, I believe.
Okay.
Is there any more dialogue? Is there any more dialogue?
You get a dialogue after you make the motion.
Okay, you can add to it. I'd like to submit a recommendation to the board for denial of the special land use. The volume of vehicular traffic will make it hazardous to other businesses in this district. It will affect health, safety, and welfare of all of this district and nearby residents. The release of hazardous materials on the site poses a possibility of contamination of groundwater over a period of time, another health issue. The site can be developed as zoned, not for the special land use. The proposal, or the proposed use is not in harmony with adjacent land uses. The proposed use is not needed for public convenience for residents of Bruce Township. The use is inconsistent with the master plant. Would you like to add?
Good.
Okay, that's my motion.
Motion from Connie. I'll second the motion. Andy, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
More discussion?
Go ahead, man.
Okay, uh, just, uh, the proposed use would not be in harmony with the existing surrounding uses?
That was a good question.
It was in there? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Just trying to make sure we covered all-
Yeah, you're good. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Andy, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Pegelstein.
Yes is to approve-
Deny.
Yes is to recommend denial.
Support the recommendations.
Support the denial.
Yes, support the denial.
Camps?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Pupitz.
Yes. Ananous passes to deny. Recommend denial to the board. Mike, for the benefit of the petitioners, that next meeting of the board would be in a week. So this is a recommendation to the board, so the board makes the final decision. So though, all of those that are interested in this subject, the applicant, and any citizens or businesses, the next meeting is two weeks from today at 6:00 PM in this same facility. And there will be, still be the same number of chairs as today. Unfortunately. What was the attorney's name again?
Sam Kilberg.
Oh, that's the applicant.
Yeah, their attorney.
Is it?
Bob Kirk.
Bob Kirk.
Say hi to Mr. Booth.
All right, I will.
He was a neighbor of mine.
He's up north.
Is he? He, he ran for office, maybe 25 years ago or so? No, 30 years, maybe 30.
That's how I met him.
Yeah, he had a little piggy.
Perks.
We'll take just a quick break. We do have more business to conduct, so if you're
not here for later items, uh, we'd ask you to go outside and talk some more or in the hallway.
What? Well, it's like, don't sit here and say- And, you know, this is all business. Yeah, did you notice that?
No.
Did you notice in the picture that the guy said there was four? I found one right over there. And he said there was four, but then he said, yeah, don't tell me.
Right.
It's kind of kind of simple.
Yeah.
I live right here. This is over 10 acres.
Yep, and the curle bonds, they got these two parson that they develop. I'm concerned that this parcel here, it could have to split.
Well, yeah, because it's over, it's over 10 acres, so the requirement-
Well, they carry a bike engine, so they fill it up somewhere, yeah.
So this is basically-
Is it to the north? It is.
Are you in that sub?
Oh, you're extending.
You've been started, yeah, we're right there.
I hardly ever go there. Both sides. Actually, my dad doesn't. It was five minutes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, where's the quarter force?
I'm guessing that's for- Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there?
Whatever.
I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, where's the quarter force over there? Whatever. I'm guessing that's for. Yeah, okay, was it that long? Okay, okay.
You're thinking yes and this way. Yes, yes. Can I come down? There's something. Are you watching the internet or not? There are new houses? I don't know. I don't know. Is this Sam Carter's house? Yeah, because we're, I'm in, I'm. Okay, if everybody can take their seats, we're going to get started again.
I work in a house, it's like church. I just manage a facility. So it's like a 10-hour job, it's like a job. What I'm sure. 12 hours. You know what? Not really. No, you see, everybody's like, you're gone, you're gone. You know, it's like, you know, you keep the project, like, I guess, I mean, some guys are. They're loud in life. My people are.
Okay. Appreciate the. Yeah. It's a long night to wait till. Good motion.
I didn't want to dwell on any longer.
Good motion. Alright, thanks. Bring it back to her.
Okay, if everybody can take their seat, we'll start again.
We are on item 7C, I believe. That's a rezoning. Dan, this one's yours, Dan Walker.
Good evening, from the other side of the seat. So we are seeking a rezoning of approximately 20 acres on the east side of M-53 near 35 Mile Road. This rezoning would be from R-1 to M-1. Truthfully, the only reason for that is because that is what self-storage facility is under as an SLU in the township zoning ordinances. Feel that it largely fits the makeup of that area when you look at everything that is, especially on that side of M-53. You have the cricket hookworm farm directly to the north, directly to the north of that. You have the dog ranch directly to the north of that. You have a corner on McKay, I'm sorry, not McKay, Ebling and 53, that is Zone C-1. To the south, you have a trucking company, you have the bio labs, which was the old L&L, Romeo Rim and Toit. In addition, this would provide more tax revenue to the township, rezoning it obviously from R-1 to M-1. We would have no use for water and/or sewer now or in the future. Very minimal traffic impact. Would be a clean, well-run facility, open, you know, obviously, we would be putting up some sort of substantial birmingham and privacy fencing, and it would be very quiet with little to no noise the majority of the time. Looked into this pretty extensively. There is a need for some sort of a facility like this, especially on 53 heading north. People want to, they come from the city down in the south, they can park their RV, their boat, whatever it is, come up from the south as they're going up north, get off, attach their boat, get back on the road and head up to wherever it is that they're going. I think by and large with that, that's all I have. Try to keep it short and sweet after you've had a couple of marathons. I've been there.
Dan, is this going to be all inside storage or are you going to be having outdoor storage as well?
We would have outdoor storage only as it pertains to, you know, RVs, boats, things of that nature, but there, yes, there would be inside storage.
Where on the lot with the storage fee for RVs and boats would be in the back?
Yeah, yep, that would be in the back. Sorry, I tried to do it so kind of everybody could see it, but.
How much of a buffer, I guess, is there in between, would there be, not between the buildings, at the end of your lot line, how much of a buffer would there be between you and Elkhorn State?
So there's currently a relatively thick tree line, and is it Elkhorn or is it Sorrel?
It's Elkhorn.
It is Elkhorn.
Sorrel's on the case.
Yep, so there's already a tree line there. Obviously, I'm not here for site plan, so this is just a conceptual drawing so that you can kind of see it. If and when we got to that point, you know, that's obviously something that we would be open to working with the board on, what they would like as far as a setback in Birmingham as it sits. It's a pretty substantial setback because the natural topography of the property would make the detention pond where it is pretty desirable because it kind of slopes down that way. But of course, there would be, again, some sort of fencing, tree line, you know.
There's a detention pond.
What's that?
Is there a detention?
There is.
I'm sorry, I didn't. Oh, that's right in the back.
It says proposed detention pond, yeah.
It's in the application.
I know, okay.
It's the last page.
Okay, gotcha.
Dan, I see there's some spots kind of reserved in the front for something else.
Yeah, I mean, truthfully, there's no plan. It's just, you know, just there for now.
Okay, Joe, your thoughts?
So, anyway, this is a vacant lot on M-53, as has been discussed. It's right near where 35 Mile comes in across the street and then south of Ebling, as everyone's referenced. It's currently zoned R-1. So the request is for M-1 zoning, as he said, that's to get a self-storage facility built, and that's a special land use in the M-1 district. That hasn't been explicitly stated as a condition of the rezoning, so unless that were offered as a condition of the rezoning, then it would be a rezoning to M-1 and whatever is permitted in M-1. I just want to be clear about that. It is just a scotch over 20 acres. So he already addressed the surrounding uses, but I'll just go through it again. We have R-1 zoning all around this except to the west. There is a little bit of property zone R-1A as you go to the south. You've got that hornworm cricket growing operation in the north, and otherwise, it's single-family agriculture or vacant on the other surrounding properties. The master plan designates this property, and then the other properties, East of Van Dijk's Rural Estate. We don't have a development impact statement. One is required for rezoning over five acres. Excuse me, it's been a long night here. And then we have our questions to consider for zoning map amendment. One, is the proposed zoning consistent with the master plan? So the rural estate designation is a large lot, single-family designation, it also accounts for agriculture. What impact would the requested zoning have on public services and utilities and natural features? So the applicant, education note self-storage is the intended use, but of course, M-1 does permit a large range of uses. Some of those are fairly intense, you could have large numbers of employees. So as I said, if it's not a conditional rezoning, then anything in M-1 is available. As the applicant provided, evidence that the property cannot be developed or used, zoned, have not seen that. It's a proposed zoning district and potential land use is compatible with surrounding uses. So we're surrounded by homes residentially zoned vacant land on three sides. To the north, we have that place that grows insects indoors for use as food by domestic reptiles and other pets. Will the proposed zoning place a burden on nearby thoroughfares? If so, how would this burden compare with the existing zoning district? Self-storage is not likely to have a significant traffic impact on something like M-53. Other uses permitted in M-1 good. Is there any other land currently available for this use? So we have a lot of M-1 property, of course, along 33 Mile Road and those little subdivisions that are, that feed into 33 Mile Road, not in this area, but to the south, two miles to the south. Will development of the site under proposed zoning be able to meet zoning district requirements? It does look like you can meet the setbacks, I guess that's really what we're asking about in that question. Is rezoning the best way to address the request or could the existing zoning district be amended to add the proposed use as it permitted or special land use? Our single-family districts are very much not intended to accommodate self-storage facilities, so adding self-storage as a principal permitted use or special land use in a single-family district wouldn't really make a lot of sense. Has there been a change in circumstances and conditions since adoption of the master plan that was important to change? Most of the development in the area predates the last master plan. The main changes actually are to the east where that subdivision is being developed house by house, so there are a few more houses there now than there would have been at the adoption of the last master plan. And finally, though, would the granting of the request result in the creation of a spot zone? And we have our supporting questions for that. Is it consistent with the master plan? Is it a logical extension of an existing zoning district in the area? Would approving the request grant a special benefit to a property under a work order? And of course, we don't have M-1 zoning in that area, so we're not expanding a district. And the master plan calls for our rural state there. That was the extent of our comments on that one. Again, just, you know, unless it's conditioned upon the use that is contemplated for the property, it is a rezoning of M-1 and any M-1 use would be available there.
Questions for Joe?
Joe, the property, sorry, real big though, the property to the north, the cricket farm that's residential?
Yeah, that's the same zoning, yeah, it's R-1. And I don't really know the approval history on that, but yeah, it is on R-1.
It's considered an agricultural business.
Yeah, I figure it's probably the raising of the animals.
And that's permitted under that residential or agricultural...
That's probably some sort of value-added farming use, I guess.
If there's no other questions just yet, then we've got a public hearing to open up.
So moved.
One second.
Seconded by Connie.
10:47.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All motion carries. Is there anyone in the audience here to address this item?
Jim Santilli, 75773 Elkhorn. I'm also president of the Elkhorn Estates Association, so I'm representing the neighborhood here tonight before you. The Elkhorn Estates Association opposes this request for the purpose of building a storage facility. Obviously, Elkhorn, being that it borders this property, would be the most impacted in the township by this development. Currently, we have 33 homes in the neighborhood. We also have an additional three homes nearing completion, and we have several other properties that will be built upon. During a recent poll, the residents of Elkhorn Estates unanimously voted to oppose the rezone request. Resident concerns included, natural view, a major reason residents moved to Bruce Township, replaced by buildings and trailers. I know it was mentioned about the trees, but what happens in the fall and wintertime? Leaves are gone, so, you know, they're concerned about the view. A light and noise pollution taken away from our current rural atmosphere. Many of the people moved to the community for the rural atmosphere. You know, I know Paul spoke earlier, and I remember when he was running, he said, "Let's keep Bruce Township where you can still see the stars at night." So, you know, let's keep that in mind. The rezone request does not conform with the Bruce Township master plan. I remember, again, during election time, we all talked about the master plan. Deviation from the master plan could spark other rezone requests along M-53. So there's that concern. Reduction of property values, self-storage facilities, several law enforcement members in our neighborhood mentioned they often attract crime. And, you know, I guess from the traffic side, you know, are they going to put in a right turn lane on M-53? You know, are we going to have larger vehicles suddenly stopping? And are we going to see an increase of rear-end crashes with the left turn backups? Could we see an increase of right angle and head-on left turn crashes? So again, on behalf of the Elkhorn Estates Association, all the residents urge you to deny this rezoning request. That's all I have. So again, hopefully you'll deny it and listen to the residents and voters. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Mark Schollenberger, 12295 Bugle Lake Road. My house is, that I'm building, we haven't moved into yet, is right in the back, that's my backyard that you're putting this thing up in. I spent better than three quarters of a million dollars building this house to move out here to get away from that kind of development, where it's nicer, more rural. I live in Livonia right now, it's been overbuilt, it's got all kinds of storage units. I don't want to look in the backyard and see RVs parked out there, excuse me. And it just doesn't fit. I spent a lot of money to come out here, live out, and I really don't want that there. So I urge you also to deny it. Thank you.
Name's Keith Masal, 12286 Bugle Lake. That's a vacant lot right now, but it's a pie-shaped one, so across, that'd be looking at my front doors and looking across there where they're proposing to build that. Haven't got far along with our plans of building the house yet, but hearing this come up was kind of a little discerning. So yet to finalize plans and get this in motion, sink money to look at the parking lot across the street wasn't why I wanted to come to Bruce Township. Second everything Jim said there, so would also urge to deny. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one else, need a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion, close the public hearing. 10:51.
Motion by Connie Chapman, seconded by Rick Eaglesey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Dan, can you have the Elkhorn Estates letter that we received entered into the record? Thank you. Dan, you heard the comments relative to your project backing up to there. Any thoughts about better trees and things of that nature? Anything to address their concerns?
So obviously, I respect everybody's opinion. I understand fully. I guess what I would say is, you know, certainly, I mean, we can put, and the plan would never have been to put trees that fall in the fall, it would be, you know, some thick, tall evergreens that are going to stay full the entire time. As far as the lighting pollution, I really think that would be very, very minimal. I'm not sure. That would become much of an issue, and I think it's something that we could certainly work on in regards to maybe ours or something of that nature. Furthermore, I guess what I would say is, there would be nothing to stop me from putting a cricket farm there with a giant, you know, pole barn where you absolutely lose any sort of view you have from your backyard or otherwise. Or, you know, putting a lavender farm with 20 sheds lined up along the side of it, you know, where people are going in and eating dinner at night. So, you know, I fully understand and I appreciate, you know, the concerns. I couldn't say I wouldn't come if it weren't me in the other spot. But again, in lieu of doing that, this provides, again, a better tax revenue. It is a minimal impact traffic-wise, certainly noise-wise, you know. It's not something that's going to be used 24/7, 365, there's no employees, you know, you're in and you're out.
May I assume you have, there would be hours of operation?
I'm sorry, who?
Oh, it's me.
Oh, I was like, it echoes off the back.
Okay, that's what I was looking into.
Yeah, of course.
May I assume there'd be hours of operation?
Yes, yes, yeah.
If you plan on storing some things in the back, would there be like a gate where people couldn't just come in and out 24 hours?
Yeah, yeah, yes. Very, it'd be very similar to, you know, Dehaut, which is right over there. And they have a gate, you know, that's only, I think it's only accessible, whatever it is, you know, seven to seven to seven, nine to five, and everybody has their own key code that allows the gate to open to go in and access their stuff.
Would there be a accelerate, whatever, the lane? Would they make you put that in? I don't know how that works, or you put that in, if the highway department makes you do that?
That would certainly be something we would have to address during site plan with MDOT, because it's obviously a state highway. And I don't know the answer to that question.
And storage of campers that are, would definitely create a traffic issue if they're coming from outdoors and they'd love to turn in there.
Fair. I mean, is it going to make more traffic than Northern Farm Market any weekend or weekday from, you know, July through September?
That's the trailer in the back.
No, I understand, I totally understand what you're saying, but again, I mean, you're talking, I think, would you be assuming that every single person is coming in at once, right? That's going to be turning, right? And if all the traffic is coming south, right, on a Sunday, because that's when people are coming home, there's generally not a ton of traffic going north. I mean, again, you have toits, four lots down the street that have, what, 100-plus semi-trucks and flatbeds coming in every day.
Van Dyke is definitely a mess. Have you considered anything, any other use of that property that it's already zoned for, anything that would work?
Well, it's zoned R-1. I mean, what are you...
Housing.
Yeah, I mean, who's gonna, who wants to buy a house right off of 53, you know, going in there with all of that?
Yeah, busy corridor. I just didn't know if you thought about any other development or whatever.
No, I mean, when we kind of started thinking about what would be a fit there, again, looking at what is on that side of the street, even the trucking company, I believe that parcel is also zoned R-1, and it's a trucking company, you know. Seemed far less, you know, invasive than a lot of the stuff that's on that side of the street.
Oh, bargains?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got a question for you, Dan. Had you ever considered doing this 100% enclosed storage? Just my personal thought on this is, you know, some other sites, there's one along M-53 that comes to mind in Washington Township. And, you know, when you migrate from the buildings that are very orderly, I mean, it's like enclosed buildings, I mean, they look like kind of an extension of Great Lakes Hornworm. Whereas as you start getting, you know, boat trailers, RVs, I realize there's a revenue stream, you know, avoided comparatively without having to put buildings in. I just, personally, I, if there's going to be something that's going to be there, I'd rather look at buildings versus like kind of like...
Something out in the open. Are you talking about the U-Haul off of 53 there in Washington? Yeah, so I think that, you know, if that was the appetite for the board, that's something that we would certainly be open to, and you can still make them big enough to put, you know, an RV or a boat or whatever it is inside of it. The U-Haul that you're referring to, they have those giant, I'll call them carports, you know. And then I think in the way, way back, they have a couple that are just open. I think our intention from the get-go, it's not on here, but it would be to have the giant carports so that it's at least somewhat covered.
And, you know, towards the sensitivity concerns, especially Elkhorn Estates, that, you know, if you were going to do that type arrangement, that those may be atypical to the norm, but do those structures closer to Van Dyke?
And that's certainly something that we would be open to doing. I don't think that, it is a little atypical, like you said, but there's more than enough frontage there that we could make it to where the lanes are wide enough that you drive past any of the vehicular storage outside to get to the enclosed storage. So then you are, there are buildings.
You know, you were part of this board, Dan. I mean, you've been here the whole night, and I mean, what's the word that's been used probably more than any other word here tonight? Rural. I mean, it's such a sensitive issue. We are the northernmost, or one of the three remaining northernmost jewels of Macomb County. If we don't get this right, you know, we'll see him on us.
I understand fully what you're saying, and again, no, I'll keep referring to it. If I wanted to put Walker's Market there, what is stopping me from doing that? And that's far more dense and less rural than what I feel like we're proposing here tonight. And, I mean, I don't, I'm not saying that the board is responsible for that or anything of that nature, I'm just saying that is the reality as it stands right now. And another, you know, to keep in mind, that lot two lots north is zoned C-1. I mean, if somebody wants to, it was a bar, I'm sure you remember, you know. Somebody wants to do something bigger there, they can. I know you all probably know that the other lot that's zoned C, I think C-1 as well, they're putting a farm there, it's probably going to be more of like a grocery store, you know. And that is not any way, shape, or form dissimilar, again, from what Goiki's was, Crooked Creek, the lavender farm, again. I mean, you have full movie productions and dining and sheds and, you know, if I put 20 sheds up there and said they were for sale, but in the meantime, I was going to lease them out to people to store their stuff in it, it's kind of a catch-22, right?
Getting back to my, you know, my enclosed...
I'm fine with that, Rick.
But I mean, would you be willing to do everything fully enclosed versus carports? The reason I'm saying that, you know, I'm a gearhead guy.
Sure.
And I mean, I've got my own accessory building, but, you know, I'm getting older. There's going to be a point where I'm not going to be able to stay where I'm at. So where do I go with my toys?
Right.
You know, and, you know, where does my son go that I'm taking a house and his toys? I mean, to me, there's a market for atypical storage that's high-end or maybe not the highest, but I mean, fully enclosed...
Totally, I totally agree with you, and that is certainly something that we have talked about. Again, this is just a conceptual drawing to give you an idea, but more likely than not, that's probably where we were going to go with it anyways, was to have it fully enclosed so that it's protected from the elements. It's not obviously going to be climate-controlled, but it's still something better than sitting outside.
So are you saying if he has campers there, probably in the front and not in the back, or put them in a building?
No, I'm saying that, you know, I'm asking Dan to consider doing all of his units enclosed, no outside storage. And rather than have, I'll call them carports, that it would be like open on an end, that everything would have a door, I mean, some of the buildings capable of housing a motorhome. I think there's a market for that. I mean, people have huge investments in these, and there's, I don't think there's many places they can store something.
There's a big market for it.
And then also asking Dan to consider these larger structures closer to Van Dyke that, I have to agree with his comments, I mean, I think that R-1 right on Van Dyke residential, I mean, I personally wouldn't want to build a house right on M-53.
Are we going to open it to public comment again?
No.
Okay, so you let him speak and you don't let the taxpayers and voters speak? So why do we have a master plan then?
There was a public hearing, you guys speak.
Okay, but you brought him back up again, we don't get to respond?
That's right.
Yeah, I think you, forget, we're your boss, okay? We're the taxpayers, we're the voters. These people, their opinion matters. The people run this community.
All right. This is standard practice of what we're doing, but keep in mind, this goes to the board. So you do have another opportunity.
Oh, we'll have the whole neighborhood here.
That's your choice. And we haven't even voted on this yet, you're assuming he's gonna give a disaster.
I think we should be able to provide feedback after all this.
I'm done.
We had public comment.
Yeah.
I guess, we did our master plan in 2020, so it's up again in '25? 2025? Isn't that where we usually redo it every five years?
I thought we did it in 21.
Okay, I'm looking, okay, I'm looking at this, that's the old.
That's the ordinance, that's not the master plan.
Oh, the master, okay. Just because we have made other changes along the way, even though I see our future land use map didn't have any new rezoning along Van Dyke.
So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna throw out some things that the planning commissioners need to consider before making a motion, before voting.
Okay.
Is one, we recently reaffirmed our master plan last year, and our master plan called for this as residential. This, this is inconsistent with the master plan. This is also not a conditional zoning request, there's been a lot of discussion on storage. This is a request to rezone to M1. By approving, we approve any use of M1, so it doesn't need to be storage. And we have history where we have approved conceptual plans before that have turned out to be much different from the conceptual plan, if we had known that before, we would not have approved it. The applicant hasn't shown why it can't be developed as a zone. It could set a precedence for further M1 development up the M53 corridor, which could have a big impact on the character of Bruce Township. It is currently surrounded by R1, so this could potentially be viewed as a spot zoning as a M1 in the middle of R1, R1. So those are the things you need to consider when voting this issue, you're voting to change it to M1. I don't disagree with you, Mike, but how did we get a warrant? I, I don't have the answer to that question.
It's called a farm, it's under agriculture because of what he raises, so.
And we also have an excess amount of unused M1 in our industrial district currently. So I don't know if we have a burning desire to expand our M1 district up 53 yet. So those are things to consider. And you, and you heard from Health Morin, the states are not in favor of it, obviously, because.
Yeah.
Obvious reasons. And Jim, I'm gonna address your question, and, and I'm not chairman, and I'm not speaking as chairman, I'm just speaking as an experienced planning commissioner. The planning commission meeting and the board meeting is a business meeting open to the public, and we have opportunities for the public to speak, and I know you have a desire to speak again, but we, we love that, and we do bring the applicant up again, it's frequent that we do that, to get clarity to issues. We've heard your concerns, and we heard them loud and clear. But thank you, and I just wanted to give you some.
Feedback on that.
Everybody's being represented, so I appreciate that.
So to at least, well, one of the issues, we're, we're fine with the conditional rezoning, that it can only be a storage facility, which also would require another meeting because it is an SLU.
I don't think we need that, if we do a conditional zoning, you don't need an SLU. You do.
Yeah, it doesn't, the conditional rezoning just says what you can do, it doesn't say anything else about how you're doing it.
Any, any other questions for the petitioner? Anyone that'd like to make a motion? All right, I'm, I'm not making the motion.
I've got a question for Joe, just for want of clarification. So for conditional rezoning, it would require a table for the applicant to come back in for subsequent meeting, is that correct?
Not necessarily, he's, he's offered the condition, that would be put in writing prior to the board making any, taking any action on it, and that would go into your motion, and then if the board were to approve it, then the contract would be developed prior to, earlier to conversation. Now, if the set of conditions were more than one condition, if they were more elaborate than that, I think you might reasonably conclude.
I'm sorry?
I, I think if the set of conditions were more elaborate than a single condition tied to a use, I think you could reasonably conclude that you can't take action on it without seeing it in writing.
I'm gonna go against what I said earlier, but I'll make a motion. I make a motion, recommend denial to the board on the following conditions. One is a development impact statement has not been submitted, which is required for rezoning over five acres. We recently reaffirmed our master plan in last year, and this is inconsistent with the master plan. We have an abundance of M1 available in our industrial, this current industrial district that is still undeveloped. The applicant has not shown that the property can develop this zone. It would be inappropriate to add storage facilities to a single family zoning district. This could create spot zoning, it also could set a precedent, future precedent to start rezoning M53 prematurely, while we still have a lot of M1, unused M1 in our industrial district. I'll just make a motion in a second, John.
Oh, second.
Danny, would you call roll?
Chapman.
I'll say yes, agrees with our motion to deny, correct? Yes.
Okay. Chumby?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Cupid? Barnett?
Yes.
Hegelstein?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
I think you have to remind the people that this is not done, this is only a recommendation to the board. You'll need to show up the applicant and the residents who are concerned about it or have issues. It's a week from Wednesday, a week, or two weeks from today at 6:00 PM in this, the board will be considering this matter. Okay, moving on to, are you Pete? Hi, Pete. Pete, it's been a while.
Pete was the first one in the door, I think, earlier, so.
You're not golfing at seven tomorrow, are you?
Good evening, good morning, actually, almost.
Yeah.
Are you, are you guys gonna stay? No, actually. No. Okay.
Yeah, there's a map of, west of 40 Drive.
Folks, we're gonna continue the meeting, so if you can carry the conversation outside. Thank you. I am 10A, get this correctly? I'm 10A, sir?
No. 8A.
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 You're right, I jumped down. Wishful thinking.
It's late.
I just had to send my wife a text because my phone won't work, I told her I'd be on the 10:30.
Oh, you better send her another text. Good evening, I'm Pete Snyder from Urban Land Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, representing the applicant, Genesis Landscaping, they are here with me tonight. And basically, it's a, it's a landscaping company, they have about 12 employees, they currently located a leased building in Washington Township, and they purchased two of the lots there on, in Schaefer Industrial condominium for the purposes of bringing their business here to Bruce Township. It's a good location for them, it's about 2.6 acres, it's zoned M1, this is an M1 use, hopefully this is your least controversial item of the evening by far. I have, I have received the comments from, from the planner regarding this project, a couple of things I just wanted to touch on, having to do with the parking. The parking, it's required 10 spaces based on, based on the one space per 500 square foot of building area, those 10 spaces are in front. It's unlikely that those spaces would get used a lot, they don't have a lot of public come here, they do have some when they're doing some, you know, they'll do some renderings and they'll, you know, be showing off a project, but it's not a high-traffic public area. The employees generally wouldn't park there as well, they'd be parking behind the fence as they come in, you know, typical of a landscaping company, they're gonna have employees coming in and getting the equipment and taking it out and doing their lawn care and then coming back. So they'd be generally parking behind the fence. We did not show specific designated employee parking back in there behind the fence, but I think it's very obvious from the plan that there's plenty of room back there to do so. And the, I think your planner noted something about trees, like the street tree requirements and the parking lot trees. It's not specifically noted on the plan, but he's got six-foot arborites, like 20-something of them screening the outside, we'll call it the fenced-in area from, from the street. Those are all six feet high plus, and then right up against the building, that's a, you see it on the site plan, there's a landscaping bed there, that's his advertisement, I mean, it's not a sign, it's nothing, but that's, it's just this beautiful landscaping area, and there's gonna be some, some big trees in that area, well, so I, I think we meet, like, in terms of quantity, we meet the number of trees, it's a landscaping company, he's not gonna chintz on that, but if, you know, if you wanted to say, hey, we'd like to see some more just specific street trees or something, he's certainly open to that, again, it's all advertising for him. So, you know, with that, I'm, I'm certainly available for any questions, I'll, I don't think we need to belabor this one any longer than it needs to, I think it's pretty straightforward. So if, if you have any questions, I am certainly available.
I think the plans look very nice, like you said, it's the least controversial subject of the night, and personally, I think it's a good fit for a landscaping company out there.
Joe, can you give us a synopsis of your stuff?
Yeah. So without summarizing the plan too much, because we're all behind in front of you, we will, this is in the M1 district, and it's in the heart of the M1 district, it's all M1 around it. This is one of the subs on the south side of 33 Mile Road, so it's filling in site by site, or in this case, two sites. 2.6 acres. Building meets the step-back and height standards of our ordinance. The one thing with the building is that we do have our building appearance standards. Let's say for non-residential buildings within 200 feet of the front lot line, the front walls of the building shall be constructed of stone, constructed of stone, brick, base brick, or other decorative material approved by the planning commission. You've got a stone band at the face of the building there, otherwise it is a metal building, so that's something we discussed with the applicant, materials on the front of that building. He already addressed the parking. I noted in my letter that they don't have a marked loading space, but I mean, like, the whole area inside the fence is like a loading space, so I don't think that's an issue, I think that they have less of a loading space than a general loading area for their, their business operations, that's pretty much what their boundary is. As far as the trees are concerned, there just, there just needs to be four canopy trees somewhere at the front of the site, so however they arrange them, that's up to them, but that's the requirement between the parking and the frontage. And then, if there is any exterior lighting on the site, we do need a photometric plan for that. I don't know if they're going to have lighting exterior or not, but we need to see plans for it if they're going to. And that was it for my highlights.
With respect to lighting, very limited lighting, some motion sensors over the doors, he's not really, there's nothing there that he needs to light, there might be some security cameras, but again, there'd be some individual lights over some of the doors, but again, they'd be motion sensor, this isn't something that's gonna be on all the time, so no need for that. So which is why there isn't a photometric plan, so.
Any response in terms of the feedback of the appearance of the building?
They, yeah, they've, they've talked with your planning department a little bit about it, again, this is, you know, this is quite a bit back in the industrial subdivision. When, when the other, when the other buildings come in, you wouldn't see this from, you know, 33 Mile Road, you would just see it from, you know, the industrial drive. It's kinda like, you know, I understand the commercial standards, they're, they're meant to make things look pretty from where people are driving by, really about the only people driving down there are gonna be, you know, industrial employees back there, so how much, you know, how much do you spend prettying up a building like that? There was also another important point to him, is that he feels, the applicant feels like the backdrop of, of the metal is a better backdrop for his landscaping bed, there, again, that's his advertise, I mean, he's gonna have some really nice landscaping in front and in back. But again, and I've discussed it with him, because again, I know the, I know the standards as, as well, it's not a hill he's gonna die on, you know, it's like, if, if you were to say absolutely you gotta do stone all the way up, or, or a little higher than you are, it's not a hill he'd die on at all. So, but he's just proposing something that he thinks would, would suit his uses, so.
What do you think, Rick? Do you like weighing on these?
Actually, this is my first site plan approval. You know, personally, I think, you know, we should stay, stay with a standard for the brick, stone facing, or just start making exceptions, I mean, it's like. Or just start making exceptions. I mean, it's like, you become a township of exceptions.
And Joe, we're good on the trees?
They will ultimately have to show them on the plan, so that would be a condition of approval. But it's a matter of how they want to group them. They just need to have four.
Net building material is acceptable to you? Building material as mentioned is acceptable?
Can you go with stoner brick or something?
What's the minimum? Is it the entire face of the front of the building, including the gable? Or is it just up to the roof line, or how, what's the actual definition?
Doesn't necessarily have to be 100% of it, yeah. If you wanted to do something where you can have different elements on the facade, that's something the planning could...
I think we was asking, is it like, you know, a belt, like a four-foot belt? Or is it all the way, you know, up eight feet?
Right. Well, they've got the belt right now, and I think if you wanted them to do something else, yeah, the gable, you wouldn't necessarily have to go all the way up into the gable or something.
It says, "Stone, face brick, or other decorative material approved by the planning commission." So it sounds like there's a little bit of subjectivity into that, doesn't it?
Not much, yeah, exactly. It's not like Washington Township, which is like 90% face brick. So, you get a little bit of flay.
Would that come back? Through for approval?
Yeah, if you state what you want, then that's something we can look at.
Yeah. Obviously, I'm hoping that we can walk away with an approved subject, too. So if there was like, you know, if you said, "Hey, it's got to go, you know, a foot above the window," or something like that, something that's tangible that we can generate a plan and your planner can review and say, "Yeah, that meets." That's the most straightforward.
I'm ready to make a motion, but I would like some help on the wording of the appearance.
Would a four-foot belt on the front be acceptable, or do you want more than that?
What is it, what is it on here right now?
It's a three-foot belt right now. It goes just to the bottom of the soles of the window.
Okay, one up to the windows, whatever that is?
Up to the windows, top of the windows.
Top of the window.
Oh, the top of the window?
That's really what the intent was, wasn't it? And it's shown on here.
Have the brick go the top of the window?
What do you think?
I don't know. I, you know, I'm far from an expert on this, so I thought it was, the requirement was clear, but here's like it's...
So what do you think it should be?
I mean, my initial thought was, you know, what are the sidewalls of the building? How tall are they?
Do you remember off the...
16, I believe, are the sidewalls.
16?
Yeah, yeah.
So, and that would be, you know, in line, come around the corner, that would be like the bottom of the, the horse eye line, at the bottom of the gable. But I mean, 16 feet is...
I think if this was facing 33 Mile Road, it'd be a different story.
Yeah.
If this was facing 33 Mile Road, it might be a different facade. But this is down an industrial street, so the amount of traffic from the public is going to be limited.
I agree with you. I think it's just how do we word that in a way that doesn't, I mean, I think there is more...
Word it that way.
That it's off the side drive.
Off of an industrial drive, not on the main street. That way there, if someone comes in, it doesn't set a precedent.
Well, if the sidewalls are 16 feet, and if you went to like the, you know, top of the doorway, I mean, doorway's, you know, six foot eight inch, so you're, you know, halfway up, compromised. I'm good with that.
That'll work.
Sure, so you'll come up with something stylish?
Yeah, we'll go with that.
Yeah, okay. That works.
I would make a motion to recommend to the board, approve.
Yeah, this is just an approval.
Yeah, we approve that here.
Okay. Take a recommendation to approve the site plan for 70591, B Big Drive, subject to the change in the appearance up to the height of...
What would you say, halfway up?
Halfway of the size, height of...
That's just the front facade, correct? Halfway up the front facade.
Halfway up the front facade. Subject to submission of an approved photometric plan and subject to submission of an approved tree plan. And we accept the parking as provided by... And we accept the parking as provided.
Yeah, except, the only thing I take exception to is the photometric plan, given that, since he doesn't have permanent lights on, the photometric plan's going to be a bunch of zeros. So, the way I understand that.
No, I get it.
So we don't need a photometric plan because there are no lights other than the ones on the building?
Motion sensors on the building, yeah.
So we'll remove the photometric?
I would just say that because of the motion sensors on the building only, that we're reading the photometric.
But I got something to add here. I mean, what lights are used on the building when they're on, they also need to be...
They have to meet our ordinance.
Yeah, we, a cut sheet for the fixtures should definitely be provided.
Downward facing.
Do you have to mention because of the brick that it is back an industrial drive? That's why you made that, wasn't that part of the...
Of the facade.
Yeah.
Of the facade, because it's hidden, not on the main brick?
Yeah, use that as a reason for the front facade.
So we said subject to the change in the front facade.
Due to its location.
Due to the location off of an industrial drive and not on the main road to the township.
I'll second that motion.
Daniel, do you have any? Good job, Rick.
Okay, Daniel, would you...
Kent?
Yes.
Pegelstein?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Trembley?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Cupids?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to...
Yep. And make sure y'all drive safe home. It's late.
Pete, when you coming back?
As often as I can. I love it.
Something like the way you do.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you.
So, 5G. Communication.
Well, it says outdoor, outdoor storage. Is that what I'm done? 10A?
10A.
No, we haven't discussed either facility items there, C2 district or the outdoor storage. So, that's obviously up to you, give them what time it is, but...
Well, we have a gentleman with sunglasses on his head that has waited the whole evening for that one issue.
Which one? Which one are you here for? 10A. Outdoor storage? Yeah.
So don't be postponed until next month. Well, he might, he might come after me.
No, no.
If we try to fail now.
Why don't we do outdoor storage, okay? And then maybe, well, 5G is going to be...
Okay, item 10A. Okay, so, it may actually be beneficial to have the gentleman who's waiting for this item just explain what he wants to do, and then we can kind of calibrate our conversation from there and try to be precise.
It's okay, I'm already in the doghouse with my wife, so...
I think the rest of us are in issues.
No, that's okay. That's all right. It's worth the wait. So hello, everybody. Again, I was here back at the beginning of February, kind of proposing an idea for one of the lots in the Beaver Creek subdivision. And the idea was to fence in and put a gravel surface on my lot and use it for outside storage. And I do understand that the typical outside storage is allowed with an accessory building on it. I understand that requirement. So my thought was, as an opportunity, maybe to start off in that fashion and market it, or at least bring in somebody who will be able to utilize that property to a point where I can then invoke a second phase and put a building up. Kind of doing it backwards, but with the intent of attracting somebody there and then building a building for their use, which would be in conformance with the current zoning. And I know there's a couple, a couple different ways that you can utilize a property. I think under the M1 light manufacturing, like building material sales. And there's a lot going on in the area as far as development. So maybe there's an opportunity to attract a building material sales company to accommodate some of that development that's going on. You know, landscaping company, like the one that was just here, they're building for their own use. I might be able to attract another landscaping company or landscape supply company that would be able to utilize the site in its current form, or in a form that I would develop it initially as, and then accessorize it with a building to envelope, I guess, the total use of the property. Yeah, I look at some of the neighboring properties and some of the neighboring uses, and there's a lot of outside storage that are accessory to current buildings out there. And even on the current property itself, there's construction equipment that is parked out there. It's been parked out there for a little bit. So what, I guess what I'm trying to do is think outside the box a little bit and try to attract somebody there that could utilize an outside storage, but then evolve it into a building, maybe for their own offices, or maybe for an inside storage for some of their use as well. You know, if I was building this for my own use, it would be a different story, but I don't have that use yet. I do have a couple companies that could eventually possibly want to move up to this area, but we're not quite there yet. So my thought is, is maybe create an opportunity to attract a business in, and I would commit, after a period of time, to build a building on the property so that it would conform with this current zoning. It would just be a different pathway. That's kind of my spiel. And I did submit a set of plans back in September of last year. They're a full engineering set. I don't know if they've been circulated or not, back then. Okay, I didn't bring any copies with me. I have a... It was like a preliminary, kind of like sent it in, maybe so you guys can get some eyes on it and have an opinion on it.
No, I remember you were here.
Yeah. Okay.
Does it look like this?
70236. That's the one. Yep. Sorry, I didn't bring, I have a small, like a really small set. That's actually much better. It's a very simple idea upfront.
You're really looking at temporary outdoor storage, some limited time? With the commitment to build a building?
Yes. Well, and again, yes, absolutely. And the hopes are, or the intent is, that when the building is built, it accommodates the people who are already there, that they can utilize. And at that point, if they continue to want to have outside storage, the building is there then for their use to use as an office, or maybe as a repair shop for any type of equipment, or even inside storage if they're doing building materials sales. They can, you know, migrate and use the interior storage for some other materials and expand their offerings, too.
How big is your piece of property?
That's a good question. I think, isn't it like an acre? I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on. It's a, one of those single pieces. Yeah, wrong one. That'll make it worse for me. You know, on that plan, it probably shows, but it's like, it's, those are, I think, acre and...
Okay, so it's not like five or 10?
No, 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 it's not.
Okay, a little over an acre, maybe?
Yeah, and that, the location of that lot is almost all the way to the south end of Beaver Creek. On the east side, yeah. It's like the third lot north of the southernmost property, or property line.
It's all the issues, our storage requires a building.
Yeah, ours, we allow storage accessory, other uses.
It's, Joe, this right up here is just commentary on the standard that we, the ordinance that we had today.
Yeah, so this, this actually was in the letter for the guy. This is kind of the one standard that we really have. It talks about how to treat outdoor storage. And I have given some commentary on it. So, you know, you've got this standard that contains operating and licensed equipment and vehicles. And I do think that it could be generally adapted into the set of standards for any outdoor storage. And that could be kind of tiered based on where it is and what it orders. So if it's, if there's residential next door, obviously, you're going to have a bigger buffering requirement than you would if it's just surrounded by industrial land. You know, we do have a lot of industrial properties at front on subdivision streets, so, you know, requiring that an outdoor storage area has direct access to a major secondary thoroughfare doesn't, isn't practical. And also, I'm not sure you necessarily want that, because that means more people are driving past it and looking at it. Also, that, you know, the 10-acre standard, I don't know why we necessarily want outdoor storage to be 10-acre, like, I don't think 10 acres would be worse than two in a lot of cases. So that, that kind of stood out to me as kind of a strange standard. We've got the standard that has to be back behind a building line, and obviously, that would, that's a pretty typical standard for outdoor storage. You do have to have fences placed outside to require a front setback, but if there's not a building, if it's just an outdoor storage use, obviously, that standard is a little inconvenient. So, there'd be a need to broaden what language we have if we wanted to commit as strictly outdoor storage standard use. We have that 100 feet, within 100 feet of residentialous own property. I mean, most of our industrial property can meet that standard. We have a lot of industrial property, and it's not, it doesn't employ residential at all. So I don't know that that's necessarily a worry. There's a prohibition on board wiring electric fences, and I would continue with that. I think we should consider alternatives to chain link if someone wanted to do, you know, more of a decorative aluminum fence or something like that. I don't know why we wouldn't let them do that. Or even, you know, a tan vinyl fence or something like, there are plenty of alternatives to chain link that... like. There are plenty of alternatives to chain link that work just fine if someone wanted to do them. Is there anybody around in this area doing this, this way? Just...
Other municipality?
I mean, other, like...
Yeah, other municipality.
Well, I mean, I...
I'm looking for what's the need in it.
Yeah, this is kind of a strange...It's just so highly specific, the outdoor storage currently operated in licensed equipment and vehicles. Like, I don't, something must have happened at some point that caused this to be touched, but I don't know what it was and why it's so specific. I think it could be just much more generalized to outdoor storage. And any type of outdoor storage, you know, if you've got just outdoor storage or if you've got accessory outdoor storage, the set of standards could be something that would apply to all.
Are we proposing change in the ordinance or some special consideration for this particular piece, kind of situation?
I think maybe perhaps both. I mean, ultimately, I think we should change our ordinance. I think we should have some standards for outdoor storage. And I think that this section specifically probably doesn't need to be so specific to a particular type of outdoor storage. You know, as far as what's being asked about here, I mean, we have a special land use process, which is, which is what we use for uses that are not otherwise permitted. And you have to find that there's similarity and that there's appropriateness and all that. And I think that would be the process you'd send this through. But then, when we go to look for that standards, it's like, what are we really looking at? If there's a fence that's not in the required front yard, and that's about it. I mean, yes, we have to think about hazardous materials and things, but otherwise, we don't really have much to talk about in terms of the site plan. You need your street tree and things like that. If you had any lighting, but if you don't have a building, you're probably not going to have electrical service, so.
I think if I take off what you said and put it in a nutshell, is what we currently have can be repurposed in M1 uses and perhaps a special land use application for what this general...
I think so, yeah. I think so. I think that's really the...
So this really needs more, more work than what we have today.
Right. We've got a couple paths here. And we can, it's late, we can visit this one, but I think that...
I suggest we do that.
Yeah, I think that we...
I suggest we table this issue till the next meeting. Need a motion?
No, no, you just, we'll bring it back next month and talk about that. But as far as, you know, the proposal here, I think, yeah, we can probably use our special land use.
I've got a question.
Sure.
Is there, kind of like, in your ideal world, what you'd like to see your property developed into with a building on it?
Yeah, I've had a couple of different ideas. Could be like a landscape supply yard, where you're supplying mulch and topsoil and maybe some stone, you know, to some of the neighboring communities. It's something closer to some of the properties that are being developed. That could be one. Also, a building material supply yard, you know, maybe wood, you know, whatever building materials, roof, shingles, that type of stuff.
What's that going to go off?
Oh, I think...
Good night?
Possibly.
The bowling ball?
What, do we turn it off? Say disarm it?
Yeah.
Is it armed right now?
No, but it automatically does.
Okay, before we leave the building, then remember, we got to disarm it before we allow it, otherwise it...
All trapped.
You're not want to face this show up here. That happened once with Fort Worth, it was not empty.
Or even a contractor's yard. There's a lot going out and up this way, so maybe a local contractor would like to utilize the yard, put a building up for like some repairs or storage of some materials that they would use on a day-to-day basis. You know, I think anything that would benefit the area with, whether it's being developed or at least a staging area or a more convenient location for a business that operates within, you know, a radius.
So for the storage without a building, it would be storing cars or trailers?
No, no. So if, say, a contractor wanted to come in, right, so he would store his equipment there, right? And a lot of times, and I am a contractor, so a lot of times when we store equipment, I have, I have two other yards, when we store equipment, it gets to a point where you want a repair facility or someplace where you could pull your equipment into the building and service it. So, you know, that would be like a horse and cart scenario, where I have a piece of land and I'm storing equipment there, and eventually I'm tied to that land to the point where it would be economical for me to build a building there and service my entire business, even put an office in. Landscapers, same way. They're parking their trailers, they're parking their skid steers, right, or even...So not cars. No, I'm not...The only thing that I would actually bring there, and this is a kind of a dream of mine, is an exotic car storage facility, an interior facility, where you would have buildings that would be heated and...
I was going to say, that's got to be climate controls for most...
Yes, yeah, yeah. But, but, you know, I think there's a lot of opportunities here. And I think, you know, this path that I'm taking would find the right opportunity for the right person to move in, and I can accommodate them once they're tied to that property and they've realized that that property is centrally located in a perfect spot for them. If it's perfect for them to park there, eventually, it'll be perfect for them to build their headquarters there. That's kind of like how I'm trying to lead this. So.
Well, table, we can discuss, and table is the motion, and I second that motion. Everyone, everyone say aye.
Who tabled it? Who was the tableer?
Mike.
Sorry.
And then you can discuss how you put the path forward. Later today.
So just to be clear, I guess the question I have is, is, are we going on the path of a special land use?
Yes, I think that is, that's what we've determined here during this discussion.
Okay.
That's probably what's going to get you through a process while we figure out...
The ordinance is ready, yeah.
Yeah.
So does he have to wait for that to process an SLU?
No, no, no. We, it's, it's...
Could, then.
He could, yeah, but it's, he's going to be waiting for a while. Our ordinance, when we don't have a use that's listed anywhere, we become, it's a special land use kind of by default. And then we have to make a determination that it's similar enough to something in a district that can be permitted there. And that it's not, you know, all the other special land use standards, too, that it's not going to be harmful to the surroundings and so on. So...
Okay, so he's ready to apply, I mean, I'm not bringing words and stuff, but I mean, as far as we're concerned, at this point...
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, go ahead and apply, and then we'll be working on the ordinance language. While we get done, we get done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is item 11, election of officers, once a year. Excuse me, more if necessary, if somebody vacates an office. So I have a, in the back of my mind, as I do jobs and work, and I'm always looking for who might be the next person to fill a position that I've had. And so I'm not going to save all the conversation that I was originally going to save, but it's late. We have a gentleman here who I think deserves to be given the opportunity to be chairman. So I would like to nominate Jared Vincent, the chairman of the planning commission, if he'll accept it.
I will accept it.
Will you, are you, Joe, welcome?
Yes.
Oh, we can do, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Ose, say nay. And I'm going to, that campus says vice chair, if he so accepts. And they will.
I'll second.
All of them.
Motion.
Aye.
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 Reverend Paul County Chapman is secretary.
Second.
Second she accepts.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good luck, officer. Okay, anybody have comments? Joe, no one else?
Yeah, I have something that I need to...C2, at one point, we're going to do a public hearing today. We didn't discuss.
Yeah, we put it off to August because we saw what was looming on the agenda.
We have to agree that we're able to, you proposed, for you to put that as a public hearing, correct?
Oh, the, the C2, the C2 stuff is different from the stuff that's going to be on the public hearing in August. The C2, we needed, we needed to discuss the C2 before we put a set public hearing.
So what's going to be in the public hearing?
That's the tobacconists and the validity period for site management.
Management, yeah.
And just FYI for board decisions that were made in June, the SLU that we made recommendation for Piravon 4099, 32 mile road, was approved by the board. And Ed and Connie are going to be with us another four years if they so desire, if the board so desires. Their terms were, I was going to say, up.
Good thing you just...
All right, number 14, motion two.
So moved.
Here's my, what about 5G?
I'm sorry. I, oh, sorry. Joe, do you have any?
Briefly, Ted said that we had to update tonight.
What's, I mean, what's going on with that now?
Do you know short?
Very little. Yeah, I mean, we're pretty strongly prejected by the federal and state governments from doing much with 5G. It doesn't...
Because we really have no control.
Well, actually, we do. Back in 2019, I worked with the board before, and we did a resolution of old enough, and it was signed and signed. We haven't had no issues with that. I'm with a group all across the state of Michigan since 2012 fighting for safe technology. 5G is going to be horrific. A lot of people don't know how bad it is. Let me give you an example. San Diego University, they put a 5G cluster tower right by the university where the students slept. 10 or 13 students died from glioblastoma. This thing is going to be horrific. I was in Lansing, Michigan. We had people flown in from all across the country hearing this 5G technology. And doctors, scientists, experts in the field, medical doctors, and they all said, this is going to be horrific. Frank Kleck, a Microsoft, also attended in Lansing. This stuff causes cancer. It's going to be horrific. Not only that, but you've got Verizon, AT&amp;T, you've got T-Mobile, et cetera, Xfinity. Every time they put a 5G tower, they're going to put like a size of a refrigerator for each one of them. And that's going to be a sore eye. Not only that, but 5G is all microwave radiation. It's like sitting in a CAT scan or an MRI for 24/7. It's, like I said, it's going to be horrific. All the people that testified in Lansing were experts in the field. Like I said, physicists, scientists, medical doctors, et cetera. They all say that this is going to be horrific. You do not want this in my township. I have, Rochester started doing that. I bailed out of there and I came here. I was getting bloody nose, headache, vertigo. I've been fighting this since 2012.
The trouble is, I don't think, we don't, you know, if we don't want it, I mean, that's one thing, but I don't think we have any control to stop it.
You don't have to let it here. You come here. I mean, it's already here.
It's already here, right?
Well, yeah, I know. There's one in Romeo, but Negan's trying to get that removed. She's going to try, because their contract is coming up.
I thought we could control it because it's on the, it's connected to the phone poles.
You can, they, no, you have control. We don't want that here. That's why I moved here, to get away from all this crap.
I mean, I agree. I'm not in favor of it.
I mean, kids, kids are getting stage four glioblastoma, brain cancer, that are body cell towers. Do we want to put that into our township and all of our people get sick? I know, I don't want to get sick. We're, right now, I'll give you an example. Right now, this is how many towers we have. They're not 5G, but we have 65 towers in 48065. 65 towers and 56 antennas. Now, we did a resolution on Senate Bill 637 and 11619, and that was approved by the previous board. It's where our township has a say on where these towers go. We don't want them over here, you know, because it's going to affect all of us. I will move. I will not live in a township that has 5G, because I know what it does. I've seen it. It's horrific. I mean, they, the stories that are coming in, kids are getting brain cancer, they put it by a school. I mean, it's just crazy.
But Joe, have you ever heard, is there anything we could do if we don't want it? I mean, to block it, to stop it?
It's permitted on cable company lines.
You know what? I'll debate with any Verizon or any of these telecom companies. I don't have no problem debating with them. When it comes, you know...
No, that's not the problem. If we don't like it, I'm just saying, I don't think we have the right to stop it or try.
You have, you have a right. Yes, you do have a right. We all have rights. Telecom companies, you better remember those. They're out to make money. They look careless about us and our families and our children and our grandchildren. And this is, we have fought this and fought this and fought this. And so far, it's so good. We haven't had it here. Thank God. Because if they do, like I said, I will move out of this township.
Trouble is, though, if they do put something like that in, I don't think they necessarily go anywhere and ask permission.
Okay, but let me tell you something. Connie, once they put it in, it's hard to get it out.
But I mean, I don't, I think they just do what they want. I don't think they ask for permission to put it in. It's there and I don't think we have the right to stop it.
There are ways around that. There are ways around that.
Do you know of communities that have actually stopped it?
Right here.
No, I don't be here, outside of here.
I, you know, I'm not concerned about the other, there have people that have fought the 5G towers and had them moved because they had them in schools and stuff. They had them moved. I mean, Verizon put a letter out saying they know that people are going to get cancer from their cell phones because they put it up to their ears, but they got money for it. They know this. They don't care. I mean, I don't know how they can sleep at night. I mean, you would, none of us would want it right by our house. Because one thing about this 5G, it goes through windows, doors, mortar, brick, everything. Unless you got a house made out of aluminum and a steel roof...
You are on a mission to stop it.
Huh?
You are on a mission to stop it, right?
I'm on a mission to protect people from getting sick.
Okay, so just letting you...
Yeah, sure.
This meeting is over. We're done. The best place to go, Mike, you're a trustee.
Mike knows it, because I gave him a list of all the problems.
I'd like to go home. I've been up since 5:00 AM, okay? You can see I've hired as this meeting has progressed, so.
I think we all are. We all are.
I'm going to, I'm going to say one thing, and get an answer from Mike, and then...The issue is this. This lady has an issue. She would like to not see... I'm done. The, the issue is this. This lady has an issue. She would like to not see site, would like to see whose township stay away from 5G. What recourse, what path does she have forbidden our township?
Well, we already have moratorium in place, but unfortunately, moratorium is not enforceable. So I don't know what else.
So is that a board issue as opposed to a...
Well, board has already put the moratorium in place. It's been in place. The reason we have it on our agenda, so it shows that the township is still looking into it.
Aware of it.
And is aware of it, so that moratorium stays a fact, but unfortunately, that moratorium doesn't carry a lot of weight. It, it, it sends a message to this body.
So my point being is, there's nothing that we're able to do with this meeting.
Okay, well, let me just, yeah, I do know a township over in McComb Township over there, um, Garfield over there. They wanted to put a 5G tower right by the sub. All the people in the sub signed a petition opposing that. And the guy called me because one of the medical doctors said, there's a guy that wants to talk to you. So I just told him what to do. However, he got a hold of me, he's in the plane. He doesn't see them. Somehow they got to the door.
If anybody wanted to put a new tower in this township, it would come to this body. Because we have...
Well, that's why, that's why I'm asking, what's, you know, I read it here and I was concerned.
Maybe, because I get 5G in my house and...
I know, I have 5G on my phone.
That's because a lot of 5G transmitters are on towers.
Right.
They're in little boxes.
But if they wanted to put a new tower, we would have to, because our desire is to have as few towers as possible.
Yeah, we have several bars with them, you know. And a 5G, that's why they're giving them out free. I told them, I don't want your 5G.
Motion to adjourn. I tried calling Philbrook, and he didn't answer. And I did disarm it, so I think it's automatic.
We just go on and we show up, it's like, see?